All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of May 28, 2008. If you'd like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance at this time?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Opel, can we have the TV coverage announcement, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Ynez Valley, Santa Maria and Orca areas. Rebroadcast of Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. And for the roll call, Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Blau?
Here.
Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
Commissioner Valencia?
Here.
And Commissioner Jackson?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Black, we have an agenda status report for today.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. This morning, we have three items on your agenda, and we're ready to move forward on all three.
Okay. And with that, we'll move to our projection report.
Certainly. I have a number of items to point out this morning. I do almost every week when we go over the Agenda Status Report. First of all, we have a special hearing tomorrow on Santa Barbara Ranch on the visual resources issues. June 4 is a full agenda with just two items on it, and you should receive your packet today. The Santa Barbara Ranch TDR ordinance and the Mission Canyon Community Plan and Residential Guidelines initiation process. June 5 next week, we also have another special hearing, the Fourth Workshop for Response to Comments. June 11 is a hearing up in Santa Maria. And that day has shortened considerably. An item that long-range planning had on June 11 has been delayed, and so we just have a couple of hours on June 11. June 25, we're again going to meet up in Santa Maria. And as you can see, that's quite a busy day for your commission. We have an additional special hearing, our first in the decision-making hearing process on Santa Barbara Ranch, scheduled for June 30. July 2, so far, is quite light, and that'll be in Santa Barbara, and then July 9 back up in Santa Maria, and so on.
Any questions from Commissioners with regard to the projection report? Commissioner Black. Good morning.
Brown, Black, Luke, it's fine. Great, thank you. Just again, I know I asked the question once before on June 25 about the Peak-Los Politas Partners project. Since we're going to be in Santa Maria, that's not going to be any problem for that project?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, it's certainly not our preference to have a Santa Barbara area project in Santa Maria, but because of the timing involved with that project, it really needed to be on that date. So we did talk to the applicant about that.
And he doesn't-
And we'll have remote testimony available.
And he has no problems with that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other further questions from Commissioners at this point? Okay, at this time, we have public comment. I remind the audience to please turn off their cellphones at this time, or turn them to silent. Public comment is earmarked for items not expressly on today's agenda. Encourage people to be brief. If you would fill out a speaker slip and pass it to Commissioner Brown at this side of the table. I believe I have one in hand, and I believe, Mr. Thorndike, that is you. Good morning and welcome. If you'd like to step to the podium, I think we hear you better there.
Good morning. I'm John Thorndike of Toro Canyon, and I've been long patient with governments, plural, for, well, in one issue, just the most recent one, since I won a case in 1991, which the court wants to solve. Wants to, an error that the court made, the court wants to solve. The political spectrum today is that the Attorney General doesn't want to solve the problem for his client, the California Fish and Game. The county's cooperative, the federal is very cooperative, and the state of California Attorney General, who literally is in the same building with the court, 300 South Spring Street, and I've been in the building from top to bottom, and I assure you that the judges are outnumbered by the Attorney General's office. Now, the judges want to solve a problem, but they can't. So I'm prepared to take the problem to the assembly. That's duck soup for me. I can go up to one capital here in California and solve the whole problem. I've done it in Washington, D.C. with the, an all attorney, virtually all attorney group, the Securities Exchange Commission. I beat them. Now, that was about 35 years ago, maybe 40. I haven't checked it out. But it was so simple, it was easy for me. I wrote a three-page brief. I handed it, hand-delivered it to every member of the House and Senate, 535 members. I was exhausted just from delivering it. I had one man helping me, and I beat them. When I got through with them, Commissioner Evans of the Securities Exchange Commission spent 20 million of his own money to get them back on track. Now, I can do that with the Attorney General's office here. Duck soup. They are so wrong. They are telling the courts what to do, and they are not supposed to do that. It's supposed to represent their client to the best interest of their client. In this city, the judge said, "I will be able to solve this problem for both your client and Mr. Thorndike. What do you say?" He says, "I insist on a jury trial," which he didn't want. He didn't use. He used it as a step to evade and a step during a political time to get a new Attorney General's attention. And I don't like that. And now is another election year coming up. I'm going to whip them all if they don't behave. But in the meantime, you people have something at stake here. And that is, the very confusion that they're using in my situation is reflective of all water problems. And this water problem, it happens to be where it's so simple, they took a pipe and put it on my pipe. And they called it creek water. Now, that's kind of ridiculous. It doesn't take a brain much bigger than a pea to figure that out. I tell you, this is going on, and we have to do something about it. We have to have good liaison between here and the state, and the state and the federal. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment at this point? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission. At this juncture, do my colleagues have any informational reports they would like to share with us today? Seeing no lights, Ms. Black, do we have any planning and development divisional briefings?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I see Mr. Baker, oh, wait. First, we have the minutes of May 5, May 7, and May 14 to be considered. I'll entertain a motion first on the minutes of May 5. If you haven't had an opportunity to review them, please take the moment, and I will wait to entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of May 5.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of May 5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Opel, can we have a rule?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Vote carries 5-0.
And moving to May 7. I will also entertain a motion. It's my favorite day, I'm going to take it anyway, and I'm going to move. Approval of the minutes as approved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Opel?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Vote carries 5-0.
And lastly, the minutes of May 14. They were attached to... Oh, I left it on the front seat. For approval. We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion, or does anybody want to take some time to take a moment? Okay, seeing no discussion, Ms. Opel?
Commissioner Brown?
Upstain.
Commissioner Blau?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Vote carries 4-0-1.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move to Director's Report. I see Mr. Baker has joined us this morning. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Four items that I'm going to comment on. Number one is that, if you weren't watching yesterday, the Board announced the appointment of a new county council, Dennis Marshall, who is coming to us from the County of Fresno, where he is currently the county council. He will be assuming his position on July 1. Secondly, the Board approved the process improvements that were approved by both your commission and the Montecito Planning Commission with regard to street naming, septic tanks, time extensions such, so that making process improvements there, essentially dealing with the hearing process and limiting it to those who are actually requesting hearings and then the appeals that would follow after that. Next item was the CPH old mill fencing issue that you saw back in, I believe it was March, and the Board upheld the appellant and changed the vote from what you had voted as a commission with regard to the fencing. I think that in talking with Gary Kaiser, who was the planner, supervising planner on that, he said the presentation that was made at the Board yesterday was substantially more informative than what was given to the Planning Commission at the time. I mean, they brought in examples of the fencing and that kind of stuff. So the Board went with the appellant on that. And lastly, there was an appeal of the Diamond Rock decision that you've made, which came in last Friday. So there will be a hearing before the Board by, the appeal was made by essentially the Stop the Trucks people from Ojai.
What was it?
Ojai. I think the issue is that, as you will recall, they requested that you certify only a portion of the EIR, and your decision was to certify the entire area. They want it to be just a portion of the EIR. So that's what the appeal is about. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to try and answer, or about any other things that are going on.
Commissioner Cooney?
Mr. Baker, do you have in mind other appeals from Commission decisions which are presently pending before the Board?
We certainly have. As you know, you've got one that's sort of on the agenda today, which is the Brown Act violation, and then there were the appeals that were followed, which is related to Tranquion Ridge. Diane says that she has a list, so she will go get that list.
All right, thank you.
I can't remember any of the others.
I'd just like to keep track of these, too. Some are set for hearing, some haven't been set for hearing, and it's easy to lose track.
Yeah, the hearings have not been set on the Tranquion Ridge. We're waiting until after we go through today's action with you. And of course, the other one just came in, so we haven't set the appeal on that one either. And the Board will be on a three-week hiatus beginning July 22, so there's a likelihood that some of these are going to be into August and September as a result.
When is the Board going on hiatus?
They're going for three weeks, beginning July 22. So it's the three meetings starting July 22, and thereafter, 29, and whatever the next one is into August.
And the schedule for budget meetings?
Budget meetings start on June 9, 11, and 13. So that's part, I think, you have a meeting on June 11, and it will not be televised because the Board hearing will be televised.
Okay. Ms. Black, did you find the?
Yes, Mr. Chair. In the North County, we have the awful, Adolphal appeal, the dogs, the Papillon dogs. We have Orchid Marketplace, which was appealed, and Diamond Rock. South County, we have the Wang Edition, and that was appealed by Mr. Nye to your commission and appealed it as well to the Board of Supervisors. Some of these are... We have an appeal that's coming to the commission. We've got Tranquion Ridge. Most of these are from a staff decisions to the Planning Commission. I think that's it.
Okay. Any other, Commissioner Brown?
I think Commissioner Valencia got his light first.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Baker, I'd just like to say for the record that my name was used during the appeal by a supporting developer that I supported the project, which was a complete untruth. I did not. I was in harmony with the Planning Commission. We voted 5-0 to deny that. Secondly, the fence that was presented at the Planning Commission was completely different from what was proposed to us, and it was a completely new application. So in my estimation, it should have been returned back to the Planning Commission, but I don't question the Board. They have the right to do whatever they want. However, I did not support or make the comments that one of the supporting developers said I did.
Okay. Now...
Thank you. Ms. Black, what is the appeal on the Orchid Village Marketplace? Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, that was an appeal filed by the Orchid Area Advisory Group, and their appeal was based upon removal of willows, the height of the, some of the buildings within the shopping center, and landscaping within the road right-of-way. Those were their concerns. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this issue from Commissioners? Ms. Black, before we go to the standard agenda, did you want to report on the Chair's meeting? Was there anything of that that we felt was pertinent here? I know we talked about story pole guidelines and...
Mr. Chair, I think mainly it dealt with predominantly BAR issues, but we did settle on some refinements to the BAR checklist that the BAR uses as they're reviewing conceptual projects at the conceptual level. We did discuss criteria for installing story poles when the BAR requests that, and it seemed like there was one other substantive thing, but I can't remember what it was. But they were all really centered around the BAR process.
Okay. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Not being familiar with what is being discussed, just a question, a brief question on, is there going to be a greater standardization of story pole installation?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, what we've discussed with the Chairs of the BAR and the two Planning Commissions, HLLAC, is whether or not they felt it was important to have some criteria or guidelines. They did. One of the BAR Chairs worked up some guidelines. We ran them through the group, some draft guidelines, ran those through the group, made some changes to them. They're really quite simple. Probably the biggest issue is certification of the story poles by the person who installs them, saying they're installed to reflect the project plans. The other issue that I think was clarified in the document is, regardless of that, we aren't appro, the BAR and staff and your commission are not approving a project based upon, solely upon story poles, you're really approving the project plans, so to prevent some concern or confusion about what the representation is with regard to story poles.
Okay. That being the case, we will move to our standard agenda. Ms. Opel, would you read item number one into the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of Steve Welton, agent for the owner, Claus Properties, to consider the following. A 07 DVP 15 08 CDP 48, applications filed on May 28, 2007, and April 21, 2008. B 07 TRM 2, application filed on May 28, 2007, and to approve the negative declaration 08 NGD 8 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll ask my colleagues if they have any ex parte or site visit disclosures to make at this time. Commissioner Brown?
I got a call from Mr. Welton, but I didn't return the call, and I made a site visit Monday.
Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also visited the site in a drive-by fashion, but I also had a lengthy meeting with Valerie Frosher, the architect on the project.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I have visited the site, and I have walked the entire site, the entire front, from the narrow lane to the end on one occasion.
Okay, and for myself, I had a conversation with Mr. Welton, and regrettably, I couldn't take the train ride that I grew up on while living near there through the property, but I have seen the site and am amply familiar with it. At this point, oh, Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, drive-by site visit, thanks.
At this point, we'll move to our staff presentation. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Nicole Maysore, Planner with Development Review South. Today, I'll be presenting the Santa Claus Lane Mixed Use Development Project. The project's site is located here at 3717 Santa Claus Lane, adjacent to the Pacific Ocean and bounded by Highway 101 and the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. The proposed project is for demolition of a 2,042-square-foot commercial structure, construction of three mixed-use commercial and residential buildings, including four commercial units totaling 3,340 square feet, and three residential units totaling 3,985 square feet. Here we see a site plan of the proposed project, also including grading of five cubic yards of cut, 1,200 cubic yards of fill, new landscaping, and new sidewalks. The project also includes a voluntary lot merger of three existing parcels. The existing parcels are shown here, here, and here in dashed blue lines. The resultant single parcel is shown here in orange. The project also includes a setback modification to allow encroachment into the front and side yard setbacks for parking and loading spaces, and a tract map for seven condominium lots. This slide shows the areas where setback modifications would be granted to allow for The project is located in a view corridor overlay area requiring Board of Architectural Review, clustering of development, and structures of no greater than 15 feet in height unless a height increase would facilitate clustering. The project was reviewed by the South County Board of Architectural Review on four occasions. After four meetings and a number of project revisions, the South County Board of Architectural Review found the use of vertical clustering, structures of greater than 15 feet in height, and the use of corridors to be a successful design option for view protection, and also found the proposed architectural style compatible with the surrounding area. Below, you'll see two of the elevations with one of the view corridors indicated. The project is located in the Toro Canyon Plan area. One goal of the Toro Canyon Plan is to improve the quality, vitality, and economic sustainability of the Santa Claus Lane commercial area. Also, with implementation of the Toro Canyon Plan, Santa Claus Lane was rezoned from highway commercial to limited commercial C1 to allow increased residential and commercial uses geared towards the local residents. The plan also called for the addition of sidewalks and landscape, landscaping, and the use of Western seaside vernacular architecture. The project is consistent with these goals and requirements of the Toro Canyon Plan because it will be one of the first developments to implement the new C1 zoning with the proposed mixed-use commercial and residential development. The project includes new sidewalks, landscaping, and bike parking, and also uses appropriate seaside architecture. The negative declaration for the Santa Claus Lane project found eight impact areas where the project would have less-than-significant impacts with mitigation. Those areas included aesthetics due to visibility of the site from Highway 101 and the beach, and partial view obstruction by the proposed structures, air quality due to dust from construction activities, cultural resources due to ground disturbance in a coastal area, fire protection due to development in an area with low water pressure, geologic processes due to potential for soil liquefaction and short-term construction-related erosion, noise as a result of freeway and railway noise over 65 decibels and short-term construction noise, transportation due to construction-related traffic, and finally, water resources because the project is located in a flood hazard overlay area, and also due to short-term construction-related erosion. Mitigation measures used to ensure less-than-significant impacts include maintenance of view corridors, South County Board of Architectural Review final review and approval, and low-intensity lighting requirements under aesthetics, desk control measures for air quality, a stop-work requirement for any cultural resource that is found during the course of development, final review and approval by the Fire Department for fire protection, for geologic processes, structural support using piles or caissons, and an erosion control plan for short-term construction impacts, construction techniques and materials, equipment shielding, and limited construction hours for noise, designated transportation parking, equipment staging areas, and limited work hours under transportation, and for water resources and flooding, an erosion control plan, raised finished floor elevations of the structures, and a designated washout area. In summary, the project is consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan, including the coastal land use plan and Toro Canyon Plan, is compliant with Article II Coastal Zoning Ordinance, and all impacts identified would be mitigated to less-than-significant levels. Therefore, staff recommends that your commission adopt the required findings for the project, including SEQA findings, approve the negative declaration case number 08 NGD 8, including the mitigation monitoring program, and approve the project subject to conditions. That will conclude staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, do we have any Commissioner questions for staff regarding the presentation? Commissioner Brown, I think you were first.
Thank you. I was just curious, because of its location, adjacent to the ocean, why there is nothing on tsunamis? And the, I guess it would be water resources flooding. Does the county not consider tsunamis in any of their, there's no discussion of tsunami Does the county not consider tsunamis in any of their, there's no discussion of tsunamis as an event that might affect land use planning?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, under the negative declaration, there is one section that talks about water run-up, tsunamis, and flooding. We analyzed impacts of flooding in general, not tsunamis specifically, but I did look into the likelihood of that. It is a possibility in Santa Barbara, although it's very unlikely, and the impacts of it wouldn't really be something that could be mitigated. It would basically negate any development, you know, make it impossible to do development along the coast anywhere if we looked at the potential unlikely impact of a large tsunami. But it would be unlikely. With regard to flooding, we did look at that, hence the raised finish floor elevations and use of piles.
Is there any sort of, and this may sound stupid because people know where they're living, but is there any sort of notice to the homeowner about the hazards with the coastal flooding or that's being in a flood hazard playing area or tsunamis?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, we certainly don't provide notice on a routine basis through the land use process. There may be notifications required through the Department of Real Estate.
And what effect, how is that affected?
They're disclosures that, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, they're disclosures that occur as you're acquiring real property.
Oh, okay.
It's one of those many, many pieces of paper you have to sign.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Maysore, could you just explain the before and after placement of parking spaces along Santa Claus Lane? There are, I think, five spaces to be allowed by the setback, and I'm not entirely clear on whether these spaces are merely an improvement of the existing paved surface of Santa Claus Lane, or if something different is being done to add spaces.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cooney, existing parking for the site is kind of unofficial parking in the road right-of-way where it can be found. The proposed parking spaces are maybe a little bit difficult to see. There's one here, here, and here, one here. The exist, the proposed parking is located uncovered here, here, covered right there, uncovered, two covered in this area, further over here uncovered, then four covered here, and then an additional uncovered space. The, the existing commercial development that has out, that is out there wouldn't be meeting parking requirements. This proposed development would meet the parking requirements for the zoning and for the use. And the overall project would decrease the amount of impervious area. Currently, the site is mostly covered by kind of degraded asphalt and concrete, and this new project would have these parking spaces, but would overall reduce the amount of impervious surfaces and add landscaping.
Thank you for that, but my question is actually a little different, and let me try and restate it. These parking spaces, as you've shown them, which are set out around the property, are in addition to the informal parking that occurs on Santa Claus Lane now on many occasions, and therefore, is it likely that on a busy beach day when people are looking for parking, there would be on-street parking closer to Santa Claus Lane from this property? Or would it be delineated in such a way so that the only permitted parking would be users of this site?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Cooney, there is no plan for signs that would limit the parking of the commercial uses. Spaces designated for the residential units would be reserved for the owners of those residential units, but there's no plans for signage or anything prohibiting users of Santa Claus Lane from parking in the commercial spaces.
All right, well, that gets, I think I, I don't quite have satisfaction as to what it's going to look like on a busy beach day, but the applicant will probably address that now that I've raised the issue.
Commissioner Cooney, they could also park, continue to park in the railroad right-of, not railroad right, road right-of-way in addition to on the site, so aside from the fact that some of these parking spaces are partially located in the road right-of-way, it wouldn't be impacting the existing parking that exists there.
Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Well, let me just ask this in a different way. I believe that it's the, what is the, it says public, I can't read it, public?
Right-of-way.
Right-of-way. So cars on a busy beach day will be parking where it says public right-of-way, and they will, I presume, unless it's marked, on that first parking area, will probably park in front of that. Does that limit the people, the folks who use this site parking if they park adjacent to that? Where's the, well, let me just, where's the ingress and egress to these parking spaces? I guess I could look on the map.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, I'll move it back to the site plan.
Oh, okay, okay, it won't then. Okay, I see, I see, thank you, okay. Thank you.
Any follow-up questions from staff at this point, or shall, seeing none, I think at this point, we will move to the applicant presentation. Good morning, Mr. Welton.
Good morning. I'm going to go ahead and grab a key word.
About how long do you anticipate you will need for this portion?
We have about 10 minutes, I believe. There's three speakers, myself, the owner, Hughes Morton, and Valerie Frosher will speak, but it'll be brief.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. You've seen some of this, so I'll skip through the quick, the parts you've already seen. This is an overhead view of the property. Again, this identifies where we're at, and I think most of you have been on-site or walked it, so the, the points of interest are the property itself, and then the fact this is open space all the way out to Padraro Lane right now, and persons using the beach generally park in this area and cross over the, this property onto the beach at some point. This is a vacant property adjacent to us, and then the rest of the Santa Claus development is this direction. This is the most recent development, I believe, on the block, which is the Paul Franz Building. Nicole showed you this as well. This is our lot merger exhibit. Those are our three parcels, real briefly. We propose to eliminate all those lot lines and convert it into one parcel and do a one-lot subdivision for the total of seven parcels, four commercial and three residential. That's the existing development. You probably saw it. As you can see, there isn't a view of the ocean as it stands right now, and one of the features of our project is to open up some view corridors, so there is usually the ocean because the ocean level's somewhere right around there if you were standing on Santa Claus Lane. That's an overhead view of what's out there right now. As Nicole pointed out, it's almost entirely paved or with asphalt or concrete on the property. There's two structures, an older gas station building, one of the three that were there in a row at one time, and a shed. Those would be removed, as well as the pavement, which would be turned to earth so we could build the new project, which looks like this. There's three units. The first unit has, proposes for two commercial units and one residential unit. The residential would be on the top floor. The second and third units each have one commercial and one residential unit. In addition to the structures on the site, there's some public improvements. There's a walking path for use of the tenants and people that visit the property out here to enjoy the ocean. Also, though, is one of the new requirements of the Toro Canyon Plan is to start getting some sidewalks out there, and we are proposing a sidewalk that kind of undulates in the front of the property, landscaping. That portion is partially within the right-of-way, so road encroachment permit would be required. There's also a pretty ample open space area here between these two buildings that we hope the public will use and enjoy the property. At this point, we have Hughes Morton, who'd like to give you a few words about how we got to this point. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioner and Commissioners. My name's Hughes Morton, I'm the property owner, and I'm delighted to be in the Planning Commission room for a Planning Commission hearing. We spent a lot of hearings in here. Just for real brief history, we started the project by taking the conceptual design to the direct neighbors and going over the style and the scale to make sure it was compatible with what they thought should be on the site, and any setbacks that may add some benefit to them, and they were very happy about the idea, particularly about the concept of revitalizing Santa Claus. Then we were on to the BAR, where we had quite a bit of meetings and quite a bit of hearings, and while they were happy with the style and the concept, their main task was applying the view corridor language, which is a little bit vague, onto a visual site and onto this site, and so we spent literally meeting by meeting shaping the plans and the structures to what you see here. I think we ended up with preservation of the views through the ocean and three relatively small structures, and the site's had an operating business on it for over 50 years, and we think this is a good update for it, and thank you for your time. I'm going to hand it over to the architect for specific architectural questions, and just one note on the parking to Commissioner Cooney. I think today on the busy beach Saturdays and Sundays, you have the retail users of the site parking in front of the site, and the idea is that some of the parking is now added onto the site, which is not there before, but I think Valerie will expand a little bit on that, so, thank you.
Hello, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chair, and fellow commissioners, I'm Valerie Frosher, the architect for the project, and, let's see, let's see if I can work this PowerPoint. Okay. Architecturally, we did work with the Western Seaside Vernacular, almost heading toward the beach cottage style, modeling it somewhat after some of the original Sandy Land beach cottages built in the 20s, but we followed the guidelines of the Western Seaside Vernacular in keeping simple roof lines, small profiles, small proportions, wood exteriors, and then we also were very interested in encouraging pedestrian access in as many ways as we could, so the street sides all have big covered porches that would lead people to come into the buildings. In the floor plans, we have the residential units above, there's two two-bedrooms, one one-bedroom, and then the commercial units down below and covered parking, and in terms of the use, we think that they could go either way, either have separate users or maybe attract live-work type of people, and so we expect small retail beach-serving types of businesses. Examples could be flower shops, coffee shop, art gallery, clothing, garden items, gifts, and we feel that this will be the first example of the new Toro Canyon zoning change, which encourages serving local as well as visitors, and the mixed-use aspect we feel is good for the neighborhood because the residents will support the local business district. As part of our process with the BAR, we really tried to explore the definition of the view corridor, and one of the things they asked us to do was to look at the difference between one-story that was 15 feet versus two-story with vertical clustering, and the conclusion was reached, this was a comment from the BAR early on when we had more mass of building, and we ended up taking a unit away to create that view corridor, and then to really focus on those openings between the buildings and keeping them clear down to the ground to achieve that vertical clustering. So by the end of that process, the BAR felt that we were achieving the goal. Now, as far as the modifications, the loading zone was one issue, and it was concluded that to do a conventional loading zone that ran through the property, entering and then exiting, would pretty much destroy a good portion of the property, being that it's such a constrained site, and so we instead came up with this solution of shared backup area, but it's all onsite. And then also, the parking mod, well, those are the covered garages, which, again, we felt was a good way to conceal some of the cars, and then the parking mods in the front yard, one of our goals was to try to keep obstructions out of the view corridors, so we've placed all the parking within the shadow line of the buildings so that the view corridors are open. We also felt that it was really important to have, again, that pedestrian quality where you would have big open space that people could enjoy rather than paving it over, so that's why we pushed some of that parking toward the street. And in answer to the earlier questions, it doesn't affect the traditional parking patterns at all. If anything, it helps organize them better than what the current situation is. So if you see the area above the sidewalk, that is all still available for parallel parking, just like it is today, and instead of the sort of chaos that's down there now, there will be organized curb cuts where you can see the entrance into the complex, and then parking that will be linear for the general public on either side of those, and then I think it'll be pretty clear that the spaces within the site are for people that are going to those businesses. So it's much more organized than the current condition, but does not take away from the current parking. And then, I guess I would just close saying that we feel like this property is ending up being a gateway to the commercial district of Santa Claus, and through the process of working on the design, we've come to actually appreciate the odd shape of the lot, that it's this very narrow, long triangle, and that the building at the very beginning, which is the end of the open space for the beach, is rounded so that it's inviting from all directions, its covered porch wraps completely around, and we think it's going to be an attractive entrance to the Santa Claus Business District. And we've reviewed the staff report and the conditions of approval, and we concur with planning's recommendations, and thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Brown has a question for the applicant?
Actually, it's just not a question, it's just a compliment, Val, that I think that the site planning is really innovative and the architecture just really fits, and I, you know, appreciate your working with the BAR in coming to this final design. I know that there's often been criticisms that the BAR takes a long time to get to final projects, but I think that what we see is, and you know, having been a member, that sometimes you work through the process and you come out with a better project than rather than trying to force it into something that's fewer meetings, but I think, and I appreciate the applicant also, so. The question I did have is, though, if, and you mentioned this, that one of the resident, one of the commercial operators may be like a little coffee shop, is there an area, and I see the covered porches, where people could sit outside? Had you thought, you thought that through, so there is area where that could happen?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of outdoor porch area for each unit.
Okay, great, thank you.
For people to sit outside.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you. Ms. Frosher, have you thought, had a chance to think about how the construction process would provide for parking? One of the neighbors has indicated a concern that there'll be so many construction vehicles in and around the site that it'll clog up at times, particularly if in conflict with a nice beach day, the ability to pass through the road. The site, I assume, will be built in stages. Is there plenty of parking onsite, or is there plenty with, with the adjacent street parking?
I think we could orchestrate the staging of the buildings to provide a lot of parking in the eastern end for construction traffic, also in the future view corridor. in the eastern end for construction traffic, also in the future view corridor areas where it's open. But we can certainly look into that more, too. And this is an interesting location because it's so seasonal. I'd say seven to eight months out of the year, it's empty. And then, those other days, it's overflowing. So... I don't know, Hughes, do you have any thoughts on that?
You could be suggesting to park on the other side of the street if there's overflow from just the site, to keep parking on that side of the street, which is used more by the beach. Typically, the beach users don't use the side across the street. The main comment is that the really crowded days are on the weekend, which, of course, we can't construct.
That's okay. That's it.
I appreciate that 99% of the time, this isn't going to be a problem, but the 1% it
is, it's going to be a real problem. And I'm not thinking so much of adding a condition to the project as adding a suggestion to the owner to think about this in advance and try and avoid a conflict with the obvious attractiveness of the beach.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, in reviewing the project, this is the only negative letter that we received this morning on the project, and it concerns with the traffic, just as Commissioner Cooney indicated. And the first thing that came to mind when I saw the project was this empty lot that is in this area over here. Is there any chance of you negotiating a parking temporarily as you're doing all this building in this empty lot in this area? Is that a very difficult thing to do?
It's something we could look into.
Yeah, I would think that would solve the entire problem. There's nothing on there, you know, it could, just to park big trucks and vehicles, it seems it would take care of the situation. Thank you.
It's in front of the coffee there. Oh, okay. I have a question. Can we go back to where the plans, footprint of the plans, just very quickly? Okay, is this technically view corridor area here?
Yes.
Now, it shows decking and two-foot, it looks to be two-fit perimeter...
Like a low railing. Yeah, that's right. And low landscaping, too.
If, are there rules or structures in place to retain that those who have things going on here aren't putting up stuff that would go higher or obscure that area?
Yeah, there's some language in the planning.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, on both the parking and the landscaping, there's a construction parking and staging condition requiring a plan designating where all the construction parking vehicles and materials will be located, that will be reviewed by Planning and Development prior to construction on the project. So, that will be something that we'll be looking at and working out and tying down. Additionally, with regard to maintenance of the view corridors, there's conditions requiring that there be no obstructions in those view corridor areas, that the buildings not be built out into those areas, and that landscaping not be allowed to block the view corridor areas as well.
Okay, thank you. Another question in this, either you or Ms. Black. There's an LOS designation of B. And then, we have a letter from a resident that acknowledges that on certain occasions, it rises to, what he articulates might be an F. When you have a calculation that arrives at a B levels of service, is it an aggregate average over the course of, or, I mean, how has that arrived at it? Because F is a pretty serious element in this letter, and I need to get a handle on what that all means.
Mr. Chair, when Public Works and Caltrans do road counts, they count the peak hour and average daily trips. So, it seems peculiar to me that they would have counted a peak hour other than the true peak, which would have indicated a higher or lower level of service. So, what we've, the information we've been provided from Public Works Roads is that the area's operating at level of service B, which is intended to account for peak.
Okay. Commissioner Brown?
And peak is Monday through Friday? Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, typically, but you occasionally see peaks at non-traditional peak hours, given uses and situations like near a school. You may have a peak hour that's much earlier than the typical afternoon peak. Right. But I don't, has there ever been a project where you've seen a peak on Saturday or Sunday? Because that's probably where the peak hour trips occur here, I would imagine. Mr. Chair, not that I can recall.
How old a traffic study is that? Do we know?
Mr. Chair, the traffic counts are fairly recent, I believe, within the last number of years. And I wanted to add that it wouldn't come anywhere near a level of service F, not even near a level of service B. The counts that were done wouldn't remove it from the existing level of service B. So, that was maybe more of a figure of speech in the letter. There's nothing to indicate that it would reach a level of service F.
Okay. And I guess the only other question I have is, my history with the site is somewhat sporadic, and there have clearly been changes since I was 10. Has the utility of surrounding sites served to increase the burden? And if so, if these are fairly recent, I think you've answered this question. I just want to give, just ferret out from this letter, there's a concern about the traffic load. And it sounds like, if these are fairly recent, then it reflects any changes that have taken place in the adjoining and the rest of the development?
Mr. Chair, they are recent counts, so they should reflect the existing conditions.
All right. Commissioner Cooney?
Ms. Frosher, you alluded earlier to the Toral Canyon plan, and I remember long ago working on that with the Planning Commission and the Santa Claus Lane owners at that time. And the concern, access to the beach was, of course, a primary one. And I just want to be sure, since this project includes a residential component, and the conflicts that we've seen along the beachfront in Santa Barbara County have been primarily with residents, is there any restriction, whatever, in terms of fencing or other barriers, to access to the property from the beach?
Do you want to answer that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cooney, currently on the site, there is fencing along the railroad tracks, and there would continue to be fencing for safety purposes. The, I could put up the aerial photo, but beachgoers typically don't walk through this site currently because it is fenced pretty much all around. So, there would continue to be fencing along the backside, made of a transparent-type see-through material that would allow for the view corridors. But right now, over in this area, there's a little pathway, and that's where beachgoers usually walk through to the beach or walk up from the beach to get back to Santa Claus Lane. So, the existing conditions wouldn't change, but there also wouldn't be direct access over the railroad tracks to this project site.
Well, thanks for that clarification. I was really referring to the site itself. I'm aware of the fence along the railroad tracks there, but in addition to that, there's no plan for any other restriction in terms of public access on the site itself. I just want to be clear about that.
You mean to the beach, or just into the property itself?
Into the property, from any direction.
Well, it will be fenced along the rear, the side with the railroad tracks. That will continue. The perimeters will be, so you would never expect the public to think that they could come in and walk straight through and go to the beach. And that's true of all of the properties down in that area because of the danger of the railroad tracks. There's no direct access through these private parcels. So, if somebody is coming into the property, it would be to go to visit one of the businesses.
Okay. And if I've done that, if I've gone to, say, a retail coffee shop or other restaurant and want to go down and take a look at the ocean, can I use that path that goes between the buildings and the landscaping shown on the plan?
Yeah, you could, you can, that path connects from one end to the other of the property, but it does not allow you to cross out and go to the beach.
Okay.
So, it's really, I think it would be more likely to be, yeah, it could be used by somebody that wanted to go from one business to the next, or by the residents. But it's not, I don't think, typically going to be used by the general public either, because it's on the backside of the buildings. There's a lot of things in between the street and that path, that I don't think that would be a tendency to go back there.
And the entrances to the buildings, I take it, are either facing Santa Claus Lane or the open space areas?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from Commissioners for the applicant? All right, at this point, I will open the public comment section on this. If you have, if there is anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this, to please hand a speaker slip to Commissioner Brown. At present, I am not holding any speaker slips. Going once, going twice, all right, I will bring it back to the commission and close the public portion of the hearing, and we'll go to any other Commissioner questions. Are there any other Commissioner questions at this time? Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I just have one question, and relative to the letter we got this morning. Is it possible, has the staff looked into the angled parking issue along Santa Claus Lane? And, of course, the issue is, is there enough street width in order to do that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, that parking area is off-site, so we didn't look at it for park, for public parking in this project.
What I was referring to is the current parallel parking that's in the right-of-way. Could that be realigned and do angled parking? Because you could get a lot more spaces using angled parking as opposed to parallel parking. The question is, did anybody look at that issue?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, I know that Public Works is engaged in looking at some parking solutions in this area, and I don't know if they've considered that particular solution. I would assume they probably have. It's a fairly obvious one. But we'll pass that along to them. I don't think it's something we can effectuate in the context of this project, but I think it is something we want to look at.
Commissioner Cooney?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And Ms. Black, if you're going to be commenting to Public Works about it, I should express concern about the idea of angled parking on that road. The problem with Santa Claus Lane is, even though it's heavily commercialized, and we're going to be adding to that with this project, many drivers treat it as a freeway on-ramp, and they start accelerating very early on the road quite often, and to the peril of pedestrians, even on non-beach days. So, any thought of backing cars into that right-of-way, I think, would create a worse traffic situation. Even though we might be able to accommodate a few more cars, to me, it isn't worth the danger that we'd be adding to the process. So, that's just another opinion from a user of that lane. I really am concerned about the safety there. I think Public Works needs to look at parking solutions and also traffic calming devices on the road, so that the area of acceleration is better delineated.
Okay. Any further Commissioner questions before we go to deliberations? I have one. I saw the cut-and-fill balance. My memories of the site are that it's, as you move back toward the breakwater and toward the railroad tracks, there's kind of a dip visibility, so that if you're standing on the site, you can see the ocean, but your, the visual is impeded. Does this raise the overall plane of the site any, or is it just basically to keep it kind of even with what's there?
Mr. Chair, there, the maximum amount of fill in any one location, which would not occur over the entire site, it would just occur in a small location, would be three feet of fill. Other areas would be less so than that. It's essentially to make the site a little bit more level for construction.
Okay. I think that answers my question, pretty much. Okay. Seeing no other questions, this is a First District item. Commissioner Cooney, do you want to discuss how you wish to proceed?
I'd be happy to hear from the rest of the commission.
Commissioner Blau?
Prepared to support the project?
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was on the commission when we were looking at the Toral Canyon project, and this was one of the areas that we were looking at. And we were always concerned about the beautification of this project. It's been very slow in coming, but I think this is going to enhance the property, and I think the buildings are, look very nice. And I'm glad that they're staying with that motif, that vernacular of the old eastern-type housing. I forget what they call it, but I think it's a very positive step, and I'm looking forward to supporting the project.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. I like the project very much, and I appreciate the care and the time that the applicant took to get it right. I guess the, my only sort of lingering thing, and the commission has discussed that, and the applicant, along with staff, is concerning the construction parking, to sort of make sure that that's works, because if it's, I don't know when the construction is expected to take place, but it's over the summer, then the parking may be an issue. But I like the project and ready to support it. Thank you.
Okay. For myself, this is the second project that intrudes on my childhood in that area, and I'm excited to see anything that can kind of enhance. I'm excited about the architecture. I'm a little less concerned about the intrusion of the construction vehicles, because as I look at what we're doing here, I don't see the invitation of a vast fleet during the entire construction process, though I feel there is comparable or sufficient area on the site to facilitate what would normally transact on a process of, project of this size and scale. I like the amenity. I like the view corridor element, and I like the architecture, and I'm thrilled that this area is getting worked on. So, I will be supporting the project. Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you all very much. I too support the project. I will say, I had a lot of skepticism from the beginning about what would be placed on this site, because it is highly visible, not only from users of Santa Claus Lane and the members of the public who frequent that particular popular beach on summer, warm days at least, but it's also highly visible from Highway 101. And I think the hard work of coming up with not only an acceptable, but a laudable design has been done. The applicant and his architect have shown a willingness to start locally, but then to adjust more globally to the entire project site, melding in with benefit of the rest of us from a visual standpoint. These operational concerns are real, because it is a difficult site in terms of Santa Claus Lane from the traffic standpoint. But I think there are enough protections there, and if the applicant continues to show the same sensitivity, there shouldn't be problems during construction as well. So, I would like to make a motion that we adopt staff's recommendations with regard to this project. And they are set forth on Page Two of our staff report.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion with the motion on the floor? Seeing none, Ms. Opeland?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Bill Kerry is 5-0.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll take a five-to-10-minute break to get set up for the next item. And Ms. Opeland, would you read our next item into the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing... Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of the Planning and Development Department. The County Planning Commission consider and adopt a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that they adopt an ordinance, case number 08 ORD 6, amending Article 35.2 Zones and Allowable Uses, Article 35.3 Site Planning and Other Project Standards, Article 35.4 Standards for Specific Land Uses, Section 35.6 Research Management, and Section 35.8 Planning Permit Procedures of Section 35-1, the Santa Barbara County Land Use and Development Code of Chapter 35, zoning of the county code that would revise, 1. The existing procedures for permitting special care homes, small additions to existing dwellings, and temporary sales offices for new subdivisions; 2. The processing of overall sign plans; and 3. The applicability of the ridgeline and hillside development standards.
Thank you very much. We'll go to the staff presentation. Mr. Langel, good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Good morning, members of the planning commission. Just to refresh your memory, most of the items being considered in this ordinance amendment package were the subject of the planning commission workshops that were held on the 9th and 23rd of April and May the 7th of this year. At those workshops, we proposed changes to overall sign plan processing, ridgeline-hillside development standards, ground-mounted solar energy systems, shifting zoning clearance to, from a land use permit with certain minor development, and process revisions for agricultural development. Based on the extensive discussion we had at those workshops and comments made by your commission, we decided not to proceed at this time with certain amendments in regards to agricultural development. We want to take a little time to develop some additional development standards that hopefully address the concerns that your commission had regarding aesthetics. Ordnance amendment before you today also does not include the shifting the permit process for freestanding solar systems to a zoning clearance. Again, we are doing additional work on that, trying to develop some sort of zoning or development standards that may allay the fears regarding where these systems may be placed and the resulting visual impacts. And lastly, we're not going to be talking about the process revisions for small, for small accessory structures that your commission seemed to not be supportive of from those workshops. What we will be talking about, however, is shifting the permit requirement from a land use permit to a zoning clearance for small additions to single-family dwellings, also shifting the permit requirement to a zoning clearance for temporary sales offices and new subdivisions, requiring the overall sign plans be processed along with the shop, development plan for the shopping center. One thing you did not see at those workshops was proposed amendments to the special care homes permit requirements, and this is in response to a request by the Board of Supervisors that they made in December 4th of 2007. That followed a discussion of an appeal of a special care home that went up to them on appeal. And lastly, your favorite subject, the proposed revisions to the ridgeline-hillside development standards. Again, this was an item that was requested by the Board of Supervisors when they were talking about extending the regional BARS at their hearing on January 15th of this year. So in regards to one-story additions to single-family dwellings, currently, all additions require a land use permit. Based on our research regarding the number of appeals at these types of projects, we found that there really weren't any real concerns from neighbors expressed for one-story additions, that when we do get appeals, they're primarily in regards to a second, a two-story addition and issues regarding views and privacy. So what proposing, then, is to shift from a land use permit to a zoning clearance, the required permit for one-story additions that comply with the standards as shown on the screen. Basically, it's one-story, and that the roof ridgeline elevation of the addition does not exceed the highest roof ridgeline of the dwelling to which it will be added to. For overall sign plans, what's in this ordinance amendment is that changing from the current two-step process whereby an applicant goes and gets a development plan for a shopping center approved by the planning commission, and then goes to the zoning administrator to get his overall sign plan approved, instead to collapse those two into one, one development application, so that your planning commission sees not only the shopping center, but also the signs for that shopping center, not necessarily the names of the businesses, but at least the placement, the colors, the, the size, things like that, so that your commission then has a full look at what the shopping center is going to look like, including the signs, once it's developed. Temporary sales offices, again, just to refresh your memory, what we propose, proposing is to shift from a land use requirement for temporary sales offices for new subdivisions, and this would cover both trailers that are brought in to active sales offices, in addition to a sales office that normally is located within the garage of a model home or something like that, instead of requiring a land use permit, because there really aren't any controversies associated with these types of things to go with a zoning clearance. Ridgeline-hillside development. Again, just to refresh your memory, the ridgeline-hillside development standards apply if there's a 16-foot drop in elevation within 100 feet of the footprint of the building. If this is the case, then that structure is required to go through the design review process and appear before whichever regional Board of Architectural Review the location occurs in. There are certain exemptions, I'm sorry, let me back up. If it is subject to the ridgeline-hillside development guidelines, then there are certain standards that they also have to follow. Primarily, there's height limitations that are different from what's normally in the zone, 16 feet in the, in the rural areas and 25 feet in the urban areas. There's also development standards that speak to where that structure may be located on the project site, and those standards seek to avoid putting a structure on top of a ridgeline, so it silhouettes against the sky. There are exemptions in the existing guidelines, our standards for agricultural windmills and water tanks, public utility poles, towers, and antennas. Additionally, the BAR can grant exemptions from the guidelines, primarily the height requirements, when they feel that the standards, if followed, would inordinately restrict the development of that property, or that if they relax the guidelines, it would result in a better design for that house. In some cases, it's better to allow an increased height, if it shrinks the footprint of the structure, reduces its overall visible effect. There's also a exemption that the director can grant when the drop in elevation is caused by a minor topographic variation. For example, if the 16-foot decrease in elevation occurs because 100 feet out from the house, there's a gully, but the property rises right up again, it continues more on a flat plain, that's really not a ridgeline situation that these standards are intended to address. So what we are proposing, and this is similar to what we presented to you before with a couple of, or new wrinkles perhaps, is that one additional exemption that we would like your commission to consider is exemptions for small additions to existing structures that meet all of these criteria. One, that the area of the addition is 500 square feet or less, and this would be a one-time-only situation. Secondly, that the height does not exceed the height of the existing roof ridgeline, that the exterior, exterior appearance style reflects the existing structure, that, that the addition uses basically the same materials, roofing, exterior physical features of the existing house, so that the two blend together. You don't have a jarring visual impact as the new versus what was there already. And at, in response to comments made by your commissioners, we've included a last criteria, which is that it's located on the site so that it's not visible if viewed from downslope. In other words, it's tucked behind the existing structure, or if it is located in front of the existing structure, it's at the same existing finished grade as that structure, so that when you view it from downslope, it doesn't add to the, the size, bulk, and scale of that existing structure. I would like to interject here that at the request of your commission, we did go and talk to the, the South County and their central BARS. They had a lot of good comments, mainly in regards to some wording changes that they wanted to see, that they felt made it more clear as to what we were proposing, and I have incorporated those into the actual ordinance language. The big, yes, basically, they felt comfortable with this particular added exemption for small additions, however. A second addition that we would like, exemption rather, that we would like to add is for structures that are not visible from public viewing areas. And if you recall from the workshops, some of the questions and concerns had to do with, well, how is this determined? Who determines what's visible and what isn't? And we were arguing that that staff could make that determination. However, the BARS were sympathetic to some of the concerns your commission had, that, well, maybe that's really not something that the staff should be doing. But, and the central BAR, for example, said, well, we can see where this exemption will be appropriate, but we'd like to see two changes. One, to restrict it to the rural areas, which seems to be the area that the concern regarding requiring people to go through the ridgeline-hillside standards came from. And secondly, let's add this to the list of exemptions that the BAR can make, instead of having staff do it. So in this case, they would have to go to the BAR, and then the BAR would make the determination whether or not they were visible, whether or not the project as built would be visible from public viewing areas, and thus, the BAR would grant that exemption.
Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I just have a question of timing. So how long would it take for the BAR to make that determination, once the application was in front of staff?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, typically what would occur is that they would have to make a, an application to the, whichever regional BAR they were located, and I think our time delay in getting on an agenda is about two to three weeks at this point with the different regional BARS. They would make a conception, they would basically just apply for an exemption, and the BAR would hopefully be able to rule at that, at that first hearing. So it wouldn't be that much of a delay in them getting on, then, to the remainder of the permit process.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, I, I would actually expect that architects would want to do this early on in the process, before they fully designed the project, because they may want to take advantage of the additional height that they could have in structure. So I would expect that they would apply for a determination of an exemption before even submitting a land use permit to the county.
Well, I guess my, my comment would be that I don't have a problem not having staff make the determination, if it gets done within two or three weeks. If you were telling me two months before they give before the BAR, I would not agree to that.
And just, just, just for clarification, in the north and central BARS, people can come in and get on an agenda up until the deadline for, for submittal on the agendas, which is about two weeks out. With the south bar and the monosito bar, they sometimes do have a backlog in their work, and so it could take longer for those.
And just to further refine into that, since all structures in monosito have to go to BAR anyway, it really wouldn't affect them. It's primarily in the, in the South County where those projects that may fall into the ridgeline situation.
But in the South County, excuse me, Mr. Chair, in the South County, though, there's not that many rural areas. It's, it's more of a C-bar issue than it would be an S-bar, I would think.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I, I think you're correct. I think it's a C-bar and an N-bar issue primarily, but I didn't want to have the commission walk out of the room thinking anybody could come in and get on an agenda within two weeks. The S-bar does tend to, to run a backlog.
Commissioner Cooney?
I'm, I'm sorry, you know, I was going to make a comment about this, but let, let, let Mr. Langel finish, and then I will.
Okay.
One, one last thing that Ms. Black reminded me of. Originally, we proposed to expand the list of examples that what, what would constitute a minor topographic variation that the director could then exempt the project from. Neither of the BARS was really happy with that, and so we, we deleted that from our proposal as well. Special care homes. Special care homes are group quarters, basically, that provide some level of assistance and care for people with some sort of disability. They are required to be licensed by the state, the Community Care Licensing Board, to make sure that they are a safe living situation, and that all the state codes are being followed. As far as local permit processing goes, currently, we have a threshold such that if the number of clients served by a special care home is 14 or fewer, that may be allowed with a land use permit. If it's 15 or more clients, then it's requires a major condition, I'm not, I'm sorry, a minor conditional use permit. This was changed from what we're proposing to go back to in the late 90s, basically, which is to go back to the situation where it's a land use permit if it's six or fewer clients, and a minor conditional use permit if it's seven or more clients. The state law provides several protections for special care homes that serve six or fewer clients, so we really don't have a lot of ability to regulate those. They are defined as a residential, not a commercial use of the property. They cannot have any special tax associated with them. The zoning standards are those that are, would be applied to any single-family dwelling in the same zone and, and area, and you cannot require CUP or variance or other special permit, again, for a special care home that serves six or fewer clients. However, once you go over that threshold of six, then the states and the federal laws do allow us greater latitude in how we regulate these, and based on extensive research by county council, their conclusion was that you may use a conditional use permit process to regulate special care homes that serve more than six clients. However, the, any conditions that you adopt with that conditional use permit have to have the, have to achieve a legitimate zoning neutral standard, and you have to make sure, and the scope of these conditions would be those that would ensure that that special care home is compatible and fits in within the neighborhood that it is proposed for. You cannot condition the project that somehow relates to the characteristics or the health of the occupants of the proposed facility. Again, because special care homes are seen as a residential use of the property, your conditioning is really such that those conditions that you would apply to any other single-family dwelling, and in terms of a special care home that serves 14, I'm sorry, serves more than seven or more people, what you're getting into, then, is, is typically the size of the facility in, in relation to the neighboring houses. And so you could attach conditions to that permit that you would, or would, might attach to any other large house going into that particular area. But again, the CUP may not be used as a mechanism to exclude the special care home from that neighborhood. And I believe that's it.
Could I ask just one quick question? Help me with the concept of zoning neutral, just so I know what it, what it means.
It basically means that you can't really look at this, you, you have to look at the special care home in terms of it being a residential use of the property in that vicinity, and you can't really say, well, this is a commercial business, and therefore we're going to condition it on that basis. So, you know, any, it's a concept that's somewhat difficult to grasp, but there are such a breadth of protections in both the fair housing laws and the state laws, that really, in trying to limit the operation of these facilities, you have to make a argument that, well, this is a condition we would apply to any other large house in this area.
Okay. Do you want to add?
Mr. Chair, I was just going to say, really, what you're looking at is the physical development of the project and not the use. So you wouldn't look at, you wouldn't distinguish this use from any other residential use in reviewing a conditional use permit for over six.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're just looking at the impact on the neighborhood, correct? Right, if you're in an R1 or 7,000-square-foot lots, and they come in, pardon me, with six or less, they can just come up to the, to the counter and get a permit and go on, and there would be no way of mitigate the impact of the cars, three shifts of people coming in continual. I've had that happen next to me, and I can understand that we do need some, although they, they don't create major problems, but there is a lot of added traffic to keep the thing going, so I think it's a good process.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Okay. Are there any additional questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Lengel, on your, on the hillside ridgeline, you made a statement that you felt, or it was staff's position, that with the new guidelines, that it would not add to the size, bulk and scale of the, of the existing house. But even though it could be at existing grade, I could foresee that it would add to the exist, to the size, bulk and scale, because if you placed it in the front of the project but to the side, and I'm not sure your definition here in this language is, I think it's, excuse me while I try to find it, that it could indeed add to the additional mass of the, of the building. So how, how did you come to the conclusion that it wouldn't?
I think, Mr. Chair members of the commission, I think perhaps what I might have, should have said is it minimizes any, any increase in the apparent size, bulk and scale of the facility due to the location in, at the same grade and in front of the structure, so that when you view the addition from down slope, you really don't see any new building mass in that, in, in that relation of the addition to the existing structure.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I think this language at least came from the discussion I had with the S-bar, and they felt like that was something that needed to be added as well, and would help.
Okay. I don't see any other additional questions at this time. This would be a time where I would open for public comment. If you would like to speak to this issue, please, slips, I don't see any slips, therefore, we will close the public portion of the hearing, come back to commissioners, and this would be the time for any final questions before deliberation. Are there any final questions? I just have one at the end of this. Will this help?
Mr. Chair, I presume what you're asking is will the change to hillside and ridgeline help? I think the others, we've discussed in some detail, the special care homes came directly from the board, it will actually tighten up the process a bit. With respect to hillside and ridgeline, I think it will help in some situations, not, it, it won't provide the relief that perhaps some would like from hillside and ridgeline, but I think it's, it's a reasonable balance.
Okay. Commissioner Brown.
The only other thought I had was on the single-family home, the, I guess the Montecito area is exempt, as well as the Galita area, because of the guideline, the design guidelines.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, first of all, I'm gonna answer the two differently because the answer really is different. When we went to the Montecito Planning Commission, the Montecito Planning Commission said, you know, this doesn't really work for us. And Noel and I thought about it and, and decided, well, everything in Montecito has to go to the Montecito BAR regardless, so this isn't gonna provide much help. And the BAR has the latitude to increase height limits if they choose to, based upon design or, or reasonable use of the property. So, Montecito, we're not incorporating, or not proposing to incorporate these changes at all. In Galita, this will only be of assistance to somebody that is otherwise not subject to BAR review. So there are properties in the Galita planning area that aren't necessarily in the design overlay. So those properties may be able to avoid a trip to the BAR if they're using that 500 square foot exemption. And then if they have to go to the BAR anyway, it's really up to the BAR to decide where to grant relief. So, so this doesn't alleviate the need for BAR when BAR is triggered by something other than hillside and ridgeline.
Okay. So those are the, basically only two areas within the county?
No, there are others. Toro has a BAR requirement as well.
Just on that, are you suggesting that this would modify that requirement? In other words, it's not a 16-foot drop or whatever, in terms of Toro now, it's in the plan that all new development has to go to BAR?
Right. So, so let me, let me try again, because I think this is a little bit difficult to, to understand. There's, there's basically three ways projects go to the BAR. Number one, they're required to go by the community plan, specific areas. There's a design overlay or, or the entire community's a, a design overlay. Second is they're a discretionary project, and they go to the BAR prior to coming to your commission or Montecito Planning Commission or the zoning administrator. And the third is they trigger the hillside and ridgeline guidelines. So the only situation we're talking about is where they trigger the hillside and ridgeline guidelines. If they're otherwise required to come to the BAR, you know, if there's two reasons that they had to go, one was hillside and ridgeline, and the other was the community plan, they'd still go. It's just the standards may be slightly different.
Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, I just wanna get some clarity on the single-family home issue, going from an LUP to a zoning clearance. Again, if there are, there is a design overlay, and that project fits into the design overlay, it is not exempt, it goes to the design, it doesn't get the zoning clearance, it has the LUP?
No. No. No, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, they would go through design review, preliminary BAR would be appealable, but they would still be subject to a zoning clearance. So the BAR action would be appealable, but not the, not the land use action. So we want, we, we don't actually grant zoning clearance until the design review is final. So if somebody goes through preliminary BAR and they wait 10 days and that is not appealed, then they'd be eligible for a zoning clearance. If it is appealed, we'd hold off on zoning clearance, resolve the BAR appeal, and then grant whatever is appropriate.
But if the, for whatever reason, if the project is small enough and doesn't fall under the design overlay, whatever the parameters are for that, then it's just a zoning clearance. Doesn't go to BAR, then it's just a zoning clearance.
That's correct.
And I, I realize this is probably unfair to ask you this question.
If it's a single-story addition.
No, I understand. Just in considering the number of projects that would fall in the Galita area under this parameter, under this new, this change, I just was, I don't have any sort of feel for if it, is it one or 10,000 or someplace in between? I suspect it's a probably pretty small number, but maybe Mr. Lengel has some.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I don't think we've tried to quantify the, the number that would fall in that particular category in Galita, but I would suspect it'd be pretty small, handful.
Yeah. See, my, my only concern here is that, and I appreciate that, just in driving around the neighborhoods, most of these additions are in the backyard, or in the back. They don't affect sort of the streetscape, or they don't affect neighborhood compatibility. But it's always the one that you never anticipate that escapes, that falls under this, that does make significant changes. And I realize that we can't plan for sort of this one, this outlier, if you will. So, that's my thought about that. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions before we move into the deliberation process? Seeing none, I will either entertain a motion or make one myself. Commissioner Blau.
I just have one to come up with deliberating. This issue of timing always bothers me. I hate to see anybody delayed. And I don't understand why we couldn't have a policy or a rule that says if they're gonna ask for the exemption, that it be put at the front of the agenda at the very next meeting because it's a two-minute yes or no, is it exempt or not? So I would support everything you've done here today. If I could get assurances that, I don't care if South County is behind, these are exemptions, yes or no, you know, make a determination. If they say no, then it gets scheduled in the regular time of things.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, I think we could, we could make some provision like that, where we treat it more like a consent agenda item.
Okay. Is there any, anyone wanna begin deliberation, Ms., Commissioner Brown?
You know, Mr. Chair, I just, there's some I support wholeheartedly and others that I have reservations on, and I'm wondering if it might be a little more orderly process to take each of these, either in discussion and/or voting by subject area. And I don't know how my fellow commissioners feel about that, but I put that out to you.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney.
That makes sense. I think we will agree quickly on certain of these, so why don't we take them one at a time?
Okay. I guess the question is, do people wish to comment and, and/or do we want to make a motion and have discussion within the motion, ending with the motion? What, Commissioner Blau?
I think we're making a recommendation, and I think we could just do, as Commissioner Brown indicated, let's just go through on each of the items and go yes or, or no, do the count, give the tally, it's a recommendation of the board, and they can, that would give them the best sense of the commission, I think.
Okay. Then let's facilitate that the most efficient way possible.
Okay. Mr. Chair, maybe I can suggest just, I'll just read them off, and then we can find out where people are at.
Okay.
Overall signed plans. Do we wanna just go down the commission and, have you indicated?
Yeah, it's okay.
Yes.
Yes. I got five yeses.
Okay. I'm gonna do the easier ones first. Special care homes. Yes?
Yes.
I'm gonna say yes with a comment. This is something that is going to give greater control to the county over the design and placement of special care homes. There's a strong societal need for these special care homes, and I think that's what drove the Board of Supervisors years ago to, to provide a broader area of exemption. But I do feel our process is fair, and that if a special care home is proposed, the conditional use permit avenue, while more tedious, will still result in the right design in the right place. So I, I'm gonna support the modification.
And, and, Mr. Chair, this is in line with what was done on Solomon Road in Orchid, Fourth District, and I wanna make sure that we can still go to 14 units, it's just subject to approval of the Board of Supervisors, except that after seven, they would have to get a minor conditional use permit to mitigate all of the impacts proposed by the project.
Actually, just with one clarification, it would be a major CUP, so the planning commission would be saying that.
Oh, a major CUP, all right, and I would support the project.
Oh, minor, excuse me. You were right.
Minor, I said minor.
You were right.
That's what I said. Thank you.
Okay. Just as, for myself, I will support it also, so I think you got five oh, except it's a whole lot easier to do this in the state of Arizona.
Well, I should make some comment as well. The reality is, you almost want to go through the conditional use permit when you do more than six, because in reality, what you end up doing is waiving a lot of conditions that you might otherwise have, by example, parking. I mean, I, it's a whole different parking arrangement, and there's other issues that arise that you're able to do, so I don't foresee it as being a burden to the user, I actually foresee it to be a benefit. Having, having built one, designed one, and, and that's 200 and some odd units, I could tell you, you almost need to go through the process. It actually saves you money and comes up with a better project than if you didn't have that. So, I don't see that as a burden at all, it's a benefit.
Okay.
Okay, I think that was five.
Temporary sales offices. Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Aye. So that's five.
Okay. Small additions to single-family homes.
Well, I, I just have a comment on this. You know, it's always, I, I support applicants being able to go through a process that's very efficient and not cumbersome. But I'm also very supportive of community goals in neighborhoods which maintain their compatibility, and I'm just always concerned that as we nibble away at the protections for neighborhoods, that we start changing characters by the fact that we guise this under the name of process improvement. I'm not, it may improve the process for the applicant, but it may not improve the process for the neighborhood or for the community. So I don't think, without some sort of further thought, investigative, investigation, that I can support this.
Commissioner Blau.
I think I'd be happier if, if the exemption were passed by the BARs on this consent kind of an issue. In other words, if, if it's 500 square feet or less, it's single story, it's a ridgeline, and it's not gonna create a.
Mr. Chair, maybe I should have given a little bit more detail on what, which one this is, because there's two left. So there's the, the hillside and ridgeline, this is not that.
Okay.
This is the approval of one story or consideration of one-story additions to single-family.
No, I understand. I, I wasn't confused there, I didn't mean to confuse you. I think what Commissioner Brown is talking about is the Galita house that's the single story, but, and, and she's concerned that that 500 square feet might increase the size, bulk and scale, be a problem.
It's, it may be in a place where that it's ungainly, and, you know, I think that's what the staff has, the idea is, most of these additions go in the backyard, nobody cares, it seems, it, it matches existing, but there's always this issue, it's the outlier, as I've said, that's like, oh my God, how did this house get built? And then there's no notification to neighbors, and sometimes neighbors are sort of the ones who go, you know, you guys really understand what you're doing here? That's the only, my only concern and hesitancy about this, that's all.
And what I was getting at is if you, if you could, if, if you could send it to the BAR on this two-week, three-week deal, and the BAR says, we don't need to review that, it's not, then it just go away.
I, I think we're, Mr. Chair, I think we'd be increasing the process, not decreasing it, because we're talking about not changing, changing the BAR standards at all. So if something requires BAR, it's in Galita, it'd go to the BAR. If it doesn't require BAR, it wouldn't go to the BAR. I, I can tell the commission that we did a data search on this over the last, I think, seven or eight years. We've never seen an appeal of a single-family addition to a home, never. We see two-story additions, but not single-story, and that's why we were trying to structure this particular one. But it wouldn't obviate the need for BAR if it was otherwise required.
Okay, that gives, I'm gonna support it just the way the staff wrote it. So that's one vote for.
Okay. Commissioner Valencian or Commissioner Cooney, do you want to add, or while you're thinking, I'll do mine?
I, I, Mr. Chair, I thought we did have a couple of appeals in the Third District, didn't we?
Not of, Mr. Chair, not of single-story homes.
Oh, single-story, I'm sorry, it was a second story that was, that's correct.
We're not talking second story, we're talking a single story.
Right, right, single-story, right.
My only comment is if BARs are populated by members of the community, I think we are protecting that to an extent, so I'm comfortable with that one. That's three.
Well, I regard this as a compromise. I would think the land use permit requirement gives the neighbors the opportunity to express their concerns. It's, it's very limited in terms of use. It does protect against the one instance in 100 where people are concerned with a view being cut off, where trees are, are otherwise impacted. There, there are a number of just little unique concerns that affect a neighborhood, and I think it's beneficial when government's responsive to that. So, a neighbor that had a serious impact to his or her enjoyment of his or her property because of a proposed addition would have no remedy other than going to court, and that, that bothers me. I think the process is not difficult the way it is, so I, I would oppose this.
Okay. That looks like three-two.
Okay, and then the final is the ridgeline and hillside development.
Well, you know, it's interesting, as I just even look at what staff has written here, we've provided so many exemptions and so many things that the applicant would have to, hoops we'd have to jump through. You know, I, from the beginning, I've had a very difficult time with this, because I think that there are reasons for ridgeline and hillside development standards. because I think that there are reasons for ridge line and hillside development standards. And this, again, is under the thought that, oh, we're going to make it easy for the applicant. And maybe we will. But I just have overall concerns. You know, I think, I've been in other communities in other states, and I think that the protections that the County of Santa Barbara has are pretty great. And our county looks as good as it does, because we have these requirements and these guidelines and these standards. So I don't, I'm sorry, I can't support it. Not even with the additional standards that are being proposed.
Okay. Who would like to weigh in next? Commissioner Cooney?
This is, this is really two proposals, isn't it? There's the 500-foot addition, and then there's the so-called invisible addition. And with regard to the invisible addition, as I understand it, this would go to BAR for an initial screening. And BAR could indeed, and will in many cases in rural areas, find that the project doesn't require a full BAR view. That seems to me a good solution. If that helps applicants, I could certainly support that. However, I side with Commissioner Brown on the 500-foot addition. I think those ought to be reviewed. I don't think it's that big. First of all, I don't think it's that significant to have the applicant go through that process. You know, there are lots of other structures, not even additions, that have to go through a BAR review. If you add a pergola or a trellis to your property in certain areas, you have to go through BAR review. So this is, what we're really doing is carving out a tiny exception through which very few applicants could fit in order to say to parts of the community, "We're trying to make the process better for you." And in this case, I just don't think that it does. I don't think the benefit outweighs the potential detriment. So I think we need to split this ridge line-hillside issue into two, and I can support half of it.
And I think Commissioner Brown's indicating she's in the same place.
Yeah, exactly.
And Commissioner Jackson's in the same place.
Okay.
Do we have any other input? I'm up to three for splitting it.
I agree with that. That kind of makes sense to me. The reality is, is that sometimes if you have too many paths to try and navigate, you get more screwed up regarding which path you have to go down, if you keep the path a little more simple. So I'll go along with that.
Okay, that's, Commissioner Valencia, do you want to weigh in on that?
I don't. I don't see any major problem here, repeating the same thing over again.
Okay, so we have now parsed it in two. And just for clarification, the, there's a 500 and there's the non-visible.
Right.
Which is the one that we have support for?
Non-visible.
Non-visible.
Right.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I think what I've heard from going through all of these is that the commission, as a whole, is supportive of the package minus the small addition, hillside and ridge line provision. Now, I know there's two commissioners that are not in favor of the small addition, the single-story addition by zoning clearance. But I do think we need a vote on the overall package, and I'm happy to reflect the distinction on the one that I think County Council's suggesting we have a recommendation to the board on the entire package as well.
Commissioner Blau first, I guess?
No, I'm just going to, I'm going to move that motion. You're entertaining the motion?
Yes.
I saw movement.
Okay. All right, it needs a second.
A second.
All right, we have a second. Now, further discussion, Commissioner Brown?
In, in an overall vote, I presume, or I hope, that when staff presents that, there's the indication of how the commission felt about, okay, fine, great.
Mr. Chair, regardless of how the commissioners vote that didn't agree with the single-story addition, we will reflect your concern. Either if you vote for the entire package, we'll say that you did not support that particular action. If you vote against the entire package, we'll indicate, but for that, you supported it. So it's kind of your choice.
Okay, Commissioner Cooney?
I need clarification on the one where a majority of commissioners felt it was not appropriate to make the recommendation. Is that out of the package?
Yes.
All right, so we're voting on the package?
Minus the hillside and ridge line, small addition.
Right, okay.
Exemption.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second to make a recommendation to the board to accept the package net of the ridge line, small addition component. Therefore, Ms. Opplin?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Vote carries 5-0.
Okay. We'll take five minutes to set up for the next item. On our standard agenda, this is the Planning Commission of May 28th. Ms. Opplin, would you read the item into the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of county staff to review and give direction on a response to a claim of Brown Act violation by the Planning Commission in Case Number 06 RVP-1, the PXP Tranquion Ridge Project.
Thank you very much. At this point, I believe we have a staff presentation.
Good morning. Yes, sir. Bill Dillon with County Council's office. Good morning. Sorry, I was a little late. I had another appointment, but thank you for being patient. Hopefully, you all have in front of you the staff report prepared by County Council and have had a chance to review it. I'm going to walk through it generally, but not try to hit every single point unless you have particular questions that raise concerns with you and that you want to talk about. So why are we here today? You should also have in your package a letter that was filed by Sunset Exploration Company through their lawyers at Truman &amp; Elliott, received on April 30th, 2008, demanding that there be a correction to, to correct a violation, an alleged violation of the Brown Act by the Planning Commission. The alleged defect is described as a defect in the notice that was published for the public hearing. So it's not anything in particular that you did on that day. You did your job. You walked through the evidence, you listened to a lot of testimony, and this issue was not even raised before you that day. So this is really, to the extent it's an objection, it's an objection filed by lawyers as to the technical niceties of the Brown Act, and is being filed pursuant to a Brown Act Government Code section that allows legislative bodies to both receive notice of the defect. And if there is a defect, then it gives you an opportunity to cure the defect. And a cure, if there was a defect, would be to re-note the hearing and give, if it was required, give the public an opportunity to have a proper project description in front of them, and then come forward and testify as to that. The context here is that the Brown Act does not per se require invalidation of legislative actions. Rather, it requires a showing of some sort of harm or prejudice. So if a person making the complaint has actual notice, and this is right out of the statute, then it is not a per se violation or a per se invalidation of the act. Rather, the courts will, if you have actual notice, show up and testify. Or even if you don't show up, if you had actual notice of the project in front of the legislative body, then that precludes you from seeking relief in court. So the focus of the objection is on, as the commission's well aware, it's in the context of the Plains PXP development application for Tranquion Ridge. You held a hearing on April, I believe it was April 21st of last month in Santa Maria, and approved the project. Prior to that time, there had been an announced agreement, private agreement, between PXP and the Environmental Defense Center, with the Environmental Defense Center representing Get Oil Out and the Citizens Planning Association. That was considered to be a landmark agreement, not so much in the context of the evidence before this commission. I guess I was quoted in the more recent letter from the lawyers from Sunset as saying it was landmark. It was landmark, but just to give you my perspective on why I made that comment, it was landmark in the sense that an environmental group came forward in Santa Barbara County and supported an oil and gas project. That was landmark. The terms of the agreement remain confidential. It's not something the county has. We were given a summary of the agreement from PXP and EDC. Their lawyers signed a summary and submitted it. I had concerns, as your legal advisor, about that constituting substantial evidence for the record for any finding or determination, because you didn't have the actual terms in front of you. You didn't have the provisions of the agreement that gave a potential escape relief or other, you know, factors that, you know, you'd want to consider before you, you know, based a permit on that kind of a decision or agreement. My concern was strictly an evidentiary concern, and in fact, if the agreement had been entered into the record, I think you could have considered it for statements of overriding consideration. And to that end, there are many cases that consider the benefits of projects. Of course, overriding considerations where you have a Class 1, significant impact that can't be fully mitigated, and where you decide the benefits of the project outweigh the impacts to the environment, then you can adopt statements of overriding consideration and approve the project. And sometimes those types of benefits are such things as a benefit to the community, a benefit to the community in terms of economic development. That's a type, that could be a benefit of permitting a new business in, say, Galita, back when that had a big commercial expansion. There was economic community benefits there, which were not part of the project description, but which were benefits that if you had evidence of it, you could consider that when you approved a project. And that could outweigh potential environmental impacts. So if you had concrete evidence of the mitigation measures offered by the EDC agreement with PXP, then you could have, I think, in my opinion, considered that as competent evidence of benefits from the project that could outweigh the environmental impact. But that is not necessarily a project description issue. So when you look at my memo, I broke it down into two components. One is generally the agreement with announced terms that go to, in particular, some land donations. I think a substantial amount of land is going to be donated, according to the, what I've heard, is going to be donated to the Trust for Public Lands. And, but there are two components of the agreement, which, of course, the county wasn't made aware of. And that's so much because they're part of the agreement, but because we received formal requests from PXP to modify their project description. We received a formal request from PXP to modify the project description as to the greenhouse gas mitigation package. And we received a formal request from PXP to modify Condition A-6 to add an end date to the project. So those are before you, not by virtue of the agreement, but by virtue of those requests from PXP in writing, submitted timely and considered by your staff and by the commission in the hearing, and incorporated into the permit. So cutting to the chase, Sunset alleges that you violated the Brown Act by not specifically noticing the agreement. My analysis breaks it down into two components. One is the agreement, and I basically conclude that it wasn't an item of business being transacted or discussed by the commission, because you had no authority to review it, approve it. In fact, you didn't even have a copy of it. Secondly, I also pointed out that while there were certain amendments to the project description, that those fall within the general acceptable limits or requirements of the Government Code to give a proper notice. The notice for this agenda item that you heard on April 21st is on page three of the staff report. To give you some context, again, the Government Code says that for a regular meeting, at least 72 hours before the meeting, an agenda shall be posted, giving a, quote, "Brief general description of each item of business to be transacted or discussed at the meeting." It then goes on to say, "A brief general description of an item generally need not exceed 20 words." That's a general guideline, but still, it gives you an idea what the legislature had in mind when they wanted a notice posted of the item to be, item of business to be transacted. You're actually holding a special meeting on the 21st, so I've also cited for you there Government Code section on page six of the staff report, 54956, regarding special meetings. It essentially, taking a look at that case Moreno cited below it, that provision in the previous section is actually incorporated into the requirements for special meetings. So it's the same idea, which is a brief general description of each item of business to be transacted or discussed, not, generally not to exceed 20 words. The notice posted for this hearing was 214 words. It basically gave a good accounting of who was applying for the permit, the type of project being pursued, the EIR that was prepared, the location of the project, and pursuant to the EIR circulated. It lists all the anticipated Class 1 environmental impacts that the EIR discusses in detail. Now, in looking at the case law in this area, I quite frankly, all the cases that I read, and I think I read every case that I could find, I did read every case I could find, and I think I read every case that's been published. And there aren't that many, but most of the cases deal with fairly egregious fact patterns where a legislative body, usually in closed session, got a little out of line. And it took steps that violated, in one instance cited in my memo, very specific requirements for giving notice and an opportunity to be heard where you're a public employee and there are charges against you in terms of your job performance. In those instances, there's a very specific controlling statute that requires that the employee be given an opportunity to hear the charges and make comment before he gets demoted or fired. So the case cited by Sunset, which I responded to in my memo, wasn't really on point. What we really are dealing with here is really the one Government Code section as embodied in the special meetings requirement that you provide a notice of the item of business to be discussed or transacted, generally not to exceed 20 words. Given the language used by the statute, or by the legislature in that statute, it suggests a legislative intent that the notice need not describe every conceivable aspect of the project, but rather, the general rule that a statute should be given, a practical construction should be followed in this instance. So with that in mind, I noted that the agenda notice specifically referred to the EIR prepared and lists the significant environmental impacts that were discussed. And among those was an extensive discussion of the baseline of operations of the Lompoc Oil and Gas Plant, and that it had a projected end date in the EIR of approximately 2022, assuming Tranquion Ridge never came online. Also, if Tranquion Ridge had been approved as originally proposed for the full 30 years from its approval date, then it was expected to operate until 2037. And then looking at the EIR, many of the Class 1 impacts from the project would have been due to extension of life of the Lompoc Oil and Gas Plant and associated facilities by extending their expected life from 2022 to 2037. And that conclusion's reflected throughout the impact summary tables in the final environmental impact report. There's one case I consulted, Western Placer Citizens for Agricultural and Rural Environment versus County of Placer. In that case, there was a benign project description modification offered by the applicant to avoid impacts. And in that case, the court litigated whether or not that was significant new information that required recirculation of the EIR, and the court concluded that it did not. In our particular case, I think the revision to the end date was intended to avoid these extension of life impacts identified in the EIR. And so, without being necessarily pushed or required by the county, the applicant, after having made an agreement with EDC, apparently that's the genesis of it, came forward with a request to modify the project description. It was meant to be a benign project description amendment, which would avoid Class 1 impacts. And on that basis, was incorporated into the project. There's also, moving on to the next point, the greenhouse gas mitigation measures for the proposed project. I gave you a quote from the EIR, which I'm sure you had a chance to familiarize yourself with. PXP had already committed, well, you know, back when we were drafting and publishing the final EIR, to preparing a greenhouse gas audit for its project facilities and implementing feasible mitigation measures at those facilities to reduce greenhouse gases. So in light of that commitment, that was already part of the record in the EIR that was circulated, the change to the project description prior to the hearing, I don't think was a significant amendment. So in that context, I think the public notice was adequate. It was 214 words. It gave you the basic who, what, where, and the impacts of the proposed project. Referred to an EIR that specifically addressed these issues. So I think anybody who was following this in any sort of... So I think anybody who was following this in any sort of detail or context of what was going on in the county would have had adequate notice over the issues going, being considered by the planning commission. There's also a provision, and I mentioned this in the memo at page nine, if there is actual notice of the item on the agenda, then, as I mentioned at the start of my comments, that therefore is a basis to not invalidate the planning commission action or any action. So this is a sort of icing on the cake. I think the notice is adequate, but in any event, it looks like Sunset had actual notice of what was going on at the hearing. The staff report was published April 14th, but actually, I think it was, might have reached some of the members of the public on April 15th. I detail in the memo how ExxonMobil submitted comments on behalf of itself and Sunset Oil Company commenting on the fact that the project description had been amended. And basically, of course, ExxonMobil and Sunset are trying to pursue Project Vahivula, which would be an onshore option for drilling for the same oil. They touted the fact that their project would actually have better economic benefits to the county by virtue of the fact that it would operate, I think it was 35 years, and there would only be a 15-year production life to the PXP project. So ExxonMobil on behalf of Sunset filed comments basically saying their project had far greater economic benefits to the county, and I think the point I was making was not so much, you know, the economic issue, but simply to show that they certainly had actual notice of the proposed termination date of 2022. They not only had actual notice, they filed written comments on April 18th, three days before the planning commission hearing. And then at the hearing itself, both ExxonMobil and Mr. Robert Nun of Sunset got up and testified as to the issue. Notably, in my analysis, no objection was raised by either of those parties, or any party for that matter, as to whether it was improper to consider the project amendment. In other words, no one stood up at that time and said, "This is a violation of the notice that was published in the agenda that was posted. You know, I needed more time to comment on this." I didn't have actual notice more than 24 hours before the hearing is what the objection should have been, because it was a special meeting, it's 24 hours' notice. In fact, 72 hours' notice, I think, would have been the previous Friday, and the 18th, I believe, was that Thursday of that week. So even if you went back 72 hours prior to the hearing on, I think it was a Monday hearing, if I recall correctly, they still had more than 72 hours' notice of the item being considered. So that's sort of a long answer. I do want to, I add one comment that's not in my staff report. I make the point in the memo that the agreement was not an item of business being discussed or considered by the planning commission. I think what Sunset really complains of is the evidence being considered by the planning commission, and it doesn't change the analysis, but, you know, my basic concern about the agreement was, you know, since it was hearsay summary of what actually occurred, that it may not quite constitute substantial evidence, given some of the case law on SEQA. But that was not a Brown Act issue, that was a SEQA substantial evidence issue for making findings and determinations or statements of overriding consideration. If Sunset's objection is to you considering evidence that was submitted late in the process, that kind of objection sometimes comes up in administrative proceedings. There's a due process right to see the evidence considered by a legislative body and have an opportunity to comment on it as a member of the public. I think that's occurred in any event, by virtue of the record in front of you, which shows that the evidence was made available. In fact, you know, the agreement itself was on the front page of the LA Times on about April 9th of that month, but it was also summarized in letters submitted by the Environmental Defense Center, was summarized, the aspects that were adopted by the county were summarized in the staff report. So I don't think there's any sort of due process concern regarding the evidence that was submitted. Your commission, as long as an item is submitted, Diane, you're going to have to, if you want to do more than a one-page submittal, has to be at least how many days? Three days, three days prior to the hearing? So that's about the only evidentiary limit you have on submission of written evidence prior to a hearing, unless, of course, you make a motion and a finding that it can be accepted for, I think it's good cause. But other than that, basically, almost any evidence is and often considered at these types of hearings. If you had dramatic new evidence that was submitted at the last moment, that might occasionally, usually, if it's new evidence submitted after the close of the public comment period, you know, we had one case years ago where a board member made an offhand comment about observations she had made while driving past a project, and the objection that we litigated was that you considered evidence that was not submitted when there was still a public comment period where we could have gotten up and responded to that. And our defense ended up being, well, we documented where in the record that evidence was already there and that the comment by the board member was not new evidence, but anyway, that was the idea. Here, the evidence is not new, it was circulated on April 14th in the staff report, received by people on April 15th, at least as does ExxonMobil and Sunset, and therefore was certainly made available to the public, and in fact, received a lively debate at the planning commission. Notwithstanding the comments made by the planning commission and your staff, you did not, at least according to your written findings and determinations, and I think, based on your, the comments I looked at in the transcript, you did not make your decision based on that agreement because you explicitly recognized the fact you didn't have it in front of you. Commissioner Valenci, I might ask you to, at some point today, to weigh in. In the transcript, you suggested, and I think it was a misstatement, in fact, I took it as just a slight mischaracterization at the time, but didn't bother to ask you about it, but in the transcript, you said you had received a copy of the agreement on a Saturday prior to the hearing. I know since then, you've mentioned the staff, and staffs mentioned to me that that was not quite what you meant to say. In fact, you saw the summary of the agreement.
That is correct. It was slightly like an abstract or synopsis of something that was prepared, but it was, in my final statement, in my quotation, it says, "So it seems that those arguments are not complete, not by the county standard anyway." So, you know.
So thank you. I just wanted to clarify that one fact in the record. Under the process in front of you, under the government code, you have 30 days to respond to the request for cure. You can respond by saying you will cure it, you can respond by saying that no cure is necessary, you could respond by doing nothing, which is taken as a statement that you will not cure it for purposes of litigation. This is not applicable to the Board of Supervisors, in our opinion. In my office, we looked at that quite closely yesterday. If there's some disagreement by Sunset over the action you take here today, they would have to file an action in 15 days in court demanding that RIT be issued ordering you to renotice the hearing. We would then have a, basically, a quick, short trial on the issue and see where it goes from there. But it's our opinion that you have done nothing wrong, the staff did nothing wrong, the notice was proper, and the recommendation for you today is to go ahead and execute the letter that was prepared by staff rejecting Sunset's demand that you cure the violation because you have determined that no violation occurred. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. At this point, we'll have any planning commissioner questions of staff as to the staff report? Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you. Mr. Dillon, I read your memo cover to cover and also looked at some of the cases, and then, of course, considered the letter delivered to us over the weekend by Truman and Elliott. And I agree with your characterization of their concern is more a matter of evidence than the Brown Act, but zeroing in on the Brown Act, which is the issue before us today, we have a lengthy notice, but if you, with hindsight, were preparing the notice today, would you be able to redo it in a way that you feel meets any conceivable objection? Or is it this evidentiary issue really at the heart of things so that it doesn't really matter how you notice it? The problem's still going to be whether the commission took into account items that it did not have before it, for example?
Commissioner, Chairman Jackson, members of the commission, Commissioner Cooney, certainly if you had it to do over again and knew what the objection was going to be coming down the road, I almost always just, you know, advise, it's easier to be broader and more comprehensive upfront in the notice than to have a good brief later in court explaining why it was okay. It's just easier to do it in the administrative records. So in hindsight, well, not in hindsight, but if we could look forward back then and, you know, modify the agenda, you know, I would always do that, even if I thought there was no legal liability. But your comment also, your question also included, could you cure any conceivable objection that might be raised? I think that's the better question, because, you know, where lawyers are looking for ways to hold up projects, they will look for weaknesses in your notice or your procedures, so they always go to whatever ambiguity that can be raised. And I think that's what's telling in this case, is that two issues were raised about the greenhouse gas mitigation project and the end date of the project, even though those were discussed in detail in the staff report, and ExxonMobil and Sunset got up and testified to those issues at the hearing. So, but the staff report had a project description that was five pages long, single-spaced. There were 182 conditions listed in the staff report for this project, and the FEIR project description actually consisted of 36 pages of project description. So trying to meet the intent of the statute to have an item of business generally described in 20 words, I mean, it's impossible, I think, to cover every conceivable objection that a smart lawyer is going to come up with. I mean, smart people are going to look for the holes or look for the potential weaknesses, and if they are told by their client to try to hold up a project for whatever reason, you know, then they're going to go to, you know, something you didn't think of, because that's just, that's just always the way it seems to work. So I don't know if that really answered your question, Commissioner Cooney, but I think that's how I see it.
Let me be clear about the reason for the question. One of the alternatives open to us, as I understand it, is to issue a new notice, hold as soon as possible a subsequent hearing, which would be very brief, and reconsider the matter as part of an existing agenda or at a special meeting. Now, could they object to the new notice? Absolutely, they could start over again, but my question was driven to, could you correct the notice in this case if notice is the only challenge under the Brown Act, so that it would be substantially better and less susceptible to attack? And if your answer is no, I don't think so, this is as good as it gets, and this is longer than usual, and they had actual notice in any event, so I don't think we'd be doing anything by waiting another 10-plus days to set a new hearing. That's what I want to hear, because, you know, my inclination is to short-circuit an intent to delay by holding another hearing in a good-faith effort to correct any defects. I want to know if there's a defect we can be effective in correcting. If not, fine, we'll have your recommendation to follow.
Well, in response to that, I think the answer is there's no guarantee. I mean, whatever we correct, I can't guarantee to you that there won't be another procedural issue that might pop up that they'll pounce on and then use that as a basis to delay the project further. So, you know, usually, in these situations, you would turn to the complaining party and ask them, "Well, what do you want in the notice?" You know, pin them down, get them to agree to it, so they can't later object, but that doesn't mean they won't raise new issues. But I didn't really approach it from that point of view, I approached it from the point of view that you did your job properly, the staff did their job properly, the matter was properly noticed, no error occurred, and on top of that, the complaining party had actual notice. So just respecting the integrity of the process, I didn't feel I could recommend to you that you renotice it when, I just didn't think you had to.
Commissioner Blau?
Yeah. As I understand this, this has now been appealed to the board. When is the soonest the board might hear the appeal? Can anybody make a guess?
Chair Jackson, members of the commission, right now, we don't have a precise schedule. We are pursuing analysis, an economic analysis, which has been one of the issues raised in the appeal. Additionally, we are, have prioritized our approach to take care of this particular matter before you today, before going forward with the appeals, because should your commission decide to rehear it, for example, then that would make any appeal schedule moot.
I guess this isn't deliberation time, but that answers my question. I have more comments to make when it comes to that.
Okay. At this point, are there any other commissioner questions for staff as to the staff report? Not seeing any. Ms. Black, help me, I think we invite the party that brought the action, a proper title for that escapes me at the moment, but it would be the moment for them to speak?
Mr. Chair, I think in this case, I'd recommend you conduct this similar to an appeal hearing, so first, I would call upon the complainant, which is Sunset, or the representative of Sunset, and then I would call upon the real property and interest.
Okay.
And then public hearing.
Okay. At this time, then, I will invite the complainant to come forward and make a presentation, and can you give me a best guess estimate of timeframe?
Good morning, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. I'm Kathleen Truman, Legal Counsel for Sunset Exploration, Inc. I think I need maybe four or five minutes at the most, it's not a long presentation. I think the items are very clearly established in both our letters, as well as the report that you received from County Council. Not surprisingly, we respectfully disagree with County Council on this one and do feel that there has been a Brown Act violation. As indicated in our written submissions, what we're asking you to do today is set aside your decision that you made on April 21st and renotice and re-agendize that hearing in compliance with the Brown Act. And in response to a question that was raised by Commissioner Cooney, I do feel that there is a way to renotice and re-agendize this matter, where the notice and the agenda would be such that my client would be able to say, "Okay, you know, we can go forward, we can have the discussion under the Brown Act. We may not necessarily agree with the ultimate decision on, for SEQA reasons, but in terms of the Brown Act issue, I think there is a way to cure this and to move on and at least get that issue out of the way." I think the April 21st hearing's timing and the transcript really show that the commission's deliberations and decision to approve the PXP project were based on the settlement agreement between PXP and the environmental groups. Yet the contents of the settlement agreement have not been provided to the county and have not been provided to the public. So the county, who is approving the project, and the public are still in the dark on this As County Council did describe, this is a landmark agreement, and I know that during the April 21st hearing, several members of the public, as well as the commissioners, talked about, "Isn't this a great agreement, and isn't it wonderful? We can use it as a base to have future agreements between industry and environmental organizations." But I find it difficult to use it as a base for future agreements when no one has it except for PXP and the environmental organizations. The timing of the commission's approval of the project was far from coincidental. As mentioned many times during the hearing, a proposal to drill had been presented to the county as early as 1999, but denied by the commission. The PXP project had languished for years. However, one day after this landmark agreement was reached between PXP and the environmental groups, county staff jumped into action and agendized a special meeting to approve the project, albeit without mentioning this landmark agreement in either the agenda or the notice. As Commissioner Cooney stated at the hearing, the reason this project is ready for commission review is that there's been this life-changing agreement with the environmental community. The transcript of the hearing also makes clear that the settlement agreement really formed the basis for the commission's decision in violation of the Brown Act. Our review of the transcript indicates that this agreement was mentioned over 100 times during the hearing by commissioners, county staff, and the public. Yes, sir?
I just want to, I think you just grazed over the heart of the question as far as this commission is concerned, and that is, how does amending the notice of the meeting help you in terms of the Brown Act? We're just focused on that. You may have 14 other causes of action in your ultimate complaint. How can we amend the notice to, if we're not going to- How can we amend the notice to, if we're not going to have the contract there and assume that for purposes of this question, how can we amend the notice that's going to satisfy you and your client?
Okay. Well, first of all, I think as the discretionary body, I think that you, and in representing the public of the County of Santa Barbara, I think you would be within your right to ask for a copy of that agreement.
That's not the question, though. I just, I only interrupted to get the answer to that one question.
Sure.
Because your letters are replete with references to the contract, why we relied on it, the emphasis, the importance. All of these issues may be raised by you at some time in a legal action, I have no question. But with regard to the Brown Act, we're just considering that. How do we amend the notice to simply say, we're going to consider issues having to do with this agreement that's going to, in your view, say to your client, they've now complied with the Brown Act?
Right.
Because if we can't do it, we might as well just move on to court right today.
Right. I do think you can do it, Honorable Chair and Honorable Commissioner Cooney. I think the way to do that is to be candid about what you are considering. If it is a confidential settlement agreement, at least, the Brown Act requires that you give notice to the public of your item of business. And it seems very clear to me in reviewing the transcript that the agreement, albeit a side, confidential side agreement, was an item of business that was discussed. And so what I would do is I would renotice it and say that you are going to be discussing this side agreement. And put that in the agenda as well. And then you can talk about it. I mean, obviously, there is a detractor in that it is a confidential side agreement, but you can then bring it up and carry that on in your discussions and deliberations, albeit, you know, that it, it's not the best evidence. I suppose the summary of the agreement is not the best evidence of the agreement. But you could at least then avoid, I think, the Brown Act problem.
Commissioner Blau, do you have a question for this?
I do. And the question is, I don't know what was in the agreement, because I didn't see it. But there are similarities to what was in the agreement and to several conditions within the staff, in the staff report. Upon which we acted. So it seems to me that, and I guess the question is, if you're saying that we considered the agreement in our decision, well, we did consider, because some of these, two of these items were in the staff report. So you can't separate those out. I mean, that's part of what was in, and yeah, if that is part of the agreement, that is part of the agreement. But it's, it's, anyway, perhaps you can respond to that.
Sure, Commissioner Blau. I think there is a response to that. And I agree, you did take parts of the agreement, to the extent you knew about them, because PXP did, after the meeting was agendized, say, okay, we'd like to amend the project description to include greenhouse gases in the end date. But there are also other topics within that settlement agreement that were discussed at the hearing. And even though they were not part of the project description, there are references in the transcript to the donation of land and to other issues that are supposedly part of the site agreement that were also considered by the commission on April 21st. So I think that's, that's one of the problems. And I think, you know, I, you have my letter, and I think you've read it. I don't want to repeat anything unnecessarily, but I think this is an easy fix. This is not, this is not a tough issue. This is one that you just take back, and you can renotice and re-agendize this matter and bring it back before the commission and void the Brown Act issue. I know that there may be other issues that we disagree upon, but the Brown Act, I think, issue is an easy one to solve. So, and I would also encourage the county, just as part of this process, you know, in the interest of public disclosure, I know a lot of people at this hearing on the 21st were concerned about the fact that this agreement was not made public. And if it is so positive and so wonderful, I, for the life of me, I can't understand why it has not been made public. It seems to me that if this is just a landmark agreement, that it would be on the front-page news. But it's, apparently, there must be something in there. So I would, I would respectfully request that you do set aside your decision from April 21st and renotice and re-agendize the hearing in compliance with the Brown Act, as I've just discussed, and move forward. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have. And I'm happy to, that you gave us the time today.
Okay. Are there any additional commissioner questions for disparate witnesses? Okay. I think, following protocol, we would now invite the impacted party. I have a speaker slip from Mr. Nunn.
Correct.
For the public comment phase.
Okay.
So I'm not trying to ignore him in that. So we would invite the applicant at this point to come forward.
My name is Steve Rush. I am Vice President with Plains Exploration Production Company, or PXP. Chair and Commissioners, I guess the way I would respond is that we really have nothing to solve here, as County Council mentioned, and you acted appropriately. And PXP requests that we act expeditiously to move this process along. We can't base that purely on the curiosity of the person who filed this claim. You acted appropriately. Time is of the essence. You've already heard that this process is delayed here in the appeal before the board. So I respectfully request that we move forward and not continue this process anymore so we can schedule the appeal hearing and move with, move on with what we feel is a good, great project for the county and a win-win for everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any commissioner questions for Mr. Rush? Okay. At this time, I will open public comment. On the issue at hand, I have three speaker slips. If anyone wishes to speak who has not turned in a speaker slip, you get them on the corner there and you hand them to Commissioner Blau. The speakers I have are Mr. Nunn, I have Mrs. Truman, or Ms. Truman again, and then I have Linda Crop. So those are the, those are the three I have. So I'll start. Mr. Nunn, if you'd like to begin.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Bob Nunn, Sunset Exploration. Thank you for holding this hearing today to discuss what we believe is a clear Brown Act violation. It's especially important when the subject is about extending offshore oil drilling in Santa Barbara, which is a community with a passion, perspective, and long memory about offshore oil and the risks to the marine environment. I'd like to echo the comments made by Ms. Truman on our behalf. And as President, I wanted to personally take the time to peer here to express my frustration on the proceedings surrounding the PXP Tranquion Ridge proposal and the discussion about the PXP-EDC side agreement that we have yet to understand and review. What's troubling is that a whole host of environmental attributes from the PXP-EDC side agreement were brought to the discussion during the proceeding that were not germane to the agendized hearing item in an effort to mask the high risk of what could be devastating impacts to the marine environment with this project. Public has a right to understand what risks are clearly at stake here, especially in the context of any deal. And the hearing noticing and proceeding, in our estimation, didn't provide this opportunity to the public. It's ironic to me that in Santa Barbara County, the day after Earth Day was celebrated in this community, and nearly 40 years after the 1969 spill that inspired a world celebration of Earth Day, the Planning Commission approved more offshore oil. The Earth Day celebration in the county, I don't believe EDC or GU was informing people in the community that they have just made a deal that would clearly allow for more offshore oil and an increased level of risk. With full respect, Commissioners, I think you need to ask yourselves if our local environment organizations didn't reach out to the public and explain their deal then. It is your responsibility of your body to offer that venue for the public. Your proceeding clearly did not offer this opportunity and, in fact, relied on this agreement, in our opinion, to rationalize the environmental risks associated with the PXP Tranq Ridge project. Again, we'd ask that you set aside your previous action. Should you rehear this project and want to include aspects of the PXP-EDC side agreement, it ought to be made available for public review and consideration. Thanks for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much. I guess at this turn would be Linda Crop.
Thank you and good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Jackson, members of the commission, my name is Linda Crop, Chief Counsel of the Environmental Defense Center. And we represent Get Oil Out and Citizens Planning Association in response to the PXP-proposed Tranquion Ridge project. First of all, I would like to commend your counsel and staff on an excellent response to this claim. We agree with the recommendations and opinion presented this morning by your counsel. And the reason we do is that it's important to realize that Sunset is grossly mischaracterizing your action on April 21st. First, your commission did not rely on confidential information. You approved two conditions to the project, information of which was presented to you well in advance of the hearing. The two conditions related to a proposed end date and a greenhouse gas mitigation plan. Both of those came about from the applicant in response to the analysis in the environmental impact report, comments that we submitted on behalf of environmental groups, asking for mitigation of those impacts, PXP's willingness to address our concerns and mitigate those impacts. The result of all of that was that PXP submitted two proposed project changes. This happens all the time. I mean, how many times have you looked at complex projects, talked about impacts? The applicant comes up and says, okay, we'll do this. I remember Sam Marcus Futhers. Every week, the applicant got up and said, okay, okay, you know, we'll do this, we'll do that. That's part of an applicant trying to address the community's concerns and impacts that have been raised during the environmental review process. Now, the greenhouse gas plan was in the final EIR, which was released on March 26th. It was reiterated in the staff report dated April 14th, well in advance of your April 21st deliberations. The end date was submitted by PXP on April 14th, included in the staff report as a project description change, again, well before your deliberations. Renoticing this item is not going to change that. It's not going to change the information that's available. It's not going to change your deliberations. As far as I know, PXP isn't going to offer anything additional for you to consider. So renoticing, first of all, is not necessary. Second of all, will not change anything. Third, will just delay the board's deliberation of this project, which you have already approved. So we respectfully urge you to reject this claim and to allow this project to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for this speaker at this time? Okay. I do have a speaker slip from Ms. Truman. Do you wish to rebut it at this point? Okay. All right. Then I think we have had all of our speakers, so I will bring it back to the commission for any further questions of staff. I don't see any, so, do my fellow commissioners have any questions? Okay. At this juncture, I believe we would begin to start deliberations. This is a third district issue. I'm particularly interested in hearing from my, my colleagues at this point as to how to proceed. So I'll go from there. Commissioner Cooney.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I will start out by saying that I have a strong personal prejudice resulting from a lengthy law practice involving matters of public access, including the Brown Act. And a strong prejudice that the workings of government be conducted in the open so that every citizen has access to the governmental entity and an opportunity for input. The hearing that we conducted on the 21st of April was not in any way conducted in closed session. We all made disclosures about contacts we had made. The public had every opportunity to understand the issue we were discussing, to appear and comment on it. And as I recall, we had numerous public speakers. If in any way I felt the public was misled to think that we were discussing something we were not, I would suggest to this commission that we renotice the hearing, conduct a second hearing, and just on the odd chance that someone out there was misled by the hearing notice, we would provide an opportunity for that person to be heard. And the benefit of that would be, I think, actually to save time because it would eliminate litigation over the Brown Act issue. But in response to my question, Ms. Truman basically reiterated that the real concern here is, and Mr. Nunn certainly supported this, is that they believe we relied on a confidential agreement in reaching our decision. And I think Ms. Truman made clear that what we should have done is notice that we were going to vote in reliance on a confidential agreement. And as a result of that, there would be pressure to bring the agreement before the commission in order to reach an appropriate decision. I'm convinced we did the right thing at the hearing, and there's no question that the project description is what we relied on. The opportunity of Sunset and any other party aggrieved by our decision, assuming it's upheld by the Board of Supervisors, would have the opportunity to bring those matters to court. But I'm now satisfied that there is nothing we could do to amend the notice itself to eliminate the Brown Act objection. I think, you know, if there's going to be litigation over the Brown Act, let it be over the 240 words that we've already submitted. And, and then we can litigate the real issues down the line. So I, on balance, I can't recommend to you that we do other than follow staff's recommendation at this point.
Yeah, I realize I aired Commissioner Valencia, this is a fourth district project. I apologize there.
Thank you.
It's both, I guess.
We co-chair.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, during deliberation, I made one comment. I said that County Council has advised that the Planning Commission may not rely on the announced terms of the PXP agreement as a basis for issuance of any permit to PXP. I was very explicit when I made that comment, and it's quoting by the appellant here. And we didn't, I, when I spoke of the PXP agreement that I received in the paper, I mean, in the mail, that Saturday afternoon, it was just another informational piece of paper that I received. And maybe I misspoke when I called it an agreement, but it was just general information. It was not specific in any way. And there are so many specifics of that agreement that we don't know. And at this particular point, I doubt that the county still, I don't think they have received a, the specific agreement. And based on the information that we had, I think we made the best decision possible. And I stand by my, my motion that I made, that it was appropriate and without any bias. And I don't see any reason for redoing it. I listened to Mr. Dillon and his explanation of the Brown Act. I also read the document. We have a copy at home. And I didn't see any violations that we committed. Many times in discussing a project, you do talk about things on the outer edges, and that's just understandable. You have to understand every part that you can within reason of the project. And that's what we did. We also, we discussed the involvement, the supposedly involvement of these Environmental Defense Center organizations, but it's purely hearsay because we don't know anything for absolute pure hearsay. And that's, I just mentioned that. So I don't see, have any problem with what we did, and I think it was appropriate. And I don't think there was a violation of the Brown Act, and ready to proceed with that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Blau.
I didn't, I abstained from voting on this issue because I was unhappy with the fact that we didn't have the benefit of knowing what the economic impact of the county was by the change in the project description. So I would much support rehearing this item very quickly. I think if that were to occur, that it lessens the time that, because I think what could happen now is you could end up with a lawsuit over the Brown Act, and then when that's decided, you end up with a lawsuit over something else. And I think if we're talking about rehearing this thing in 10 days or some real short period of time, and we eliminate the Brown Act, it also gives the staff the time to give the public and me the benefit of what the economic impact of the change in the, in the project is. So if the motion that you make today is to rehear it, I'm going to support it. If the motion is to accept the county's proposed letters in the staff report, I'm going to abstain again.
Commissioner Blau.
I appreciate that we have a lawyer on this commission, because Commissioner Cooney always helps to frame questions that I probably wouldn't think about in the kind of depth that he does. But notwithstanding that, I'm taken by what County Council has said and what the appeal is before us, which is regarding the Brown Act, and I, I'm hard-pressed to see how it could have been much, I support what County Council is saying. I don't see that there was any violation of Brown Act. I'm not averse to sort of pulling the stitching tighter if the commission wishes to rehear the project to, in order to clarify or strengthen some concerns that the commission may have. But I do believe that any lawyer could find reason to litigate on anything. So I'm, I'm supportive of what County Council says, but I'm happy to go along however the commission feels is best way to either remedy what may be perceived as a Brown Act violation, which I, I have a hard time seeing after County Council's discussion, and going forth on any other issues that may assist the county in, or may reinforce this, this commission's deliberative action.
For myself, because I'm comparatively new on this commission, I try very hard to listen to those people who we have on staff to determine the proper protocols and to confine my deliberations and my analysis to those areas, and that information that I am expected to do so, and I feel my comments on that day meant that. I am not averse, if there was great efficacy, to gilding the lily somewhat as far as the Brown Act, but I am not moved that that is wholly necessary. I, I feel that I strove to have the integrity in the decision I had, and I will continue to strive in that same fashion if it continues later or doesn't. But I think what I am hearing from those that I look to for direction, that we fulfilled our obligation, and I agree with that assessment. So I am prepared to go along with the staff recommendation as it is presented and elect to send the letter as sent. At this juncture, I believe then we would look for a motion. Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Chair, after this happened, there was a letter that came in from the Air Force concerning Sunset's discussion concerning the placing of their facility on Vandenberg Air Force Base. I won't get into the details of it, but it certainly wasn't what they were expecting, I don't think. So there's other things that have come up since then, but that has nothing to do with the situation. The situation here is violation of the Brown Act, and I, at this particular point, I don't feel that there was one. So with that, I move that we accept the staff's recommendation to deny this appeal.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. I will look for a second. Is there a second? Then I shall second it. Commissioner Cooney, for discussion.
Since this, this has some likelihood of being transcript before the Superior Court in a few weeks, I think our motion should be clear that it is, as set out by County Council on the first page of their memo, there are three separate parts, and I would appreciate it, Commissioner Valencia, if we could make specific reference to this action. It's really not an appeal here. We're having a hearing based on a letter objecting on, on the Brown Act, and so we need to reach these three conclusions. And I would appreciate if you would just clarify your motion to make sure all of those are in it.
So, Mr. Chair, this is in the staff memo that is attached to the County Council memo.
Yes, and I believe Commissioner Valencia is about to read from it.
Mr. Chair, if it's necessary, I'll read all three items because of the, but I will do, I move that we determine that no Brown Act violation occurred with respect to the noticing of the April 21st, 2008 Planning Commission's special hearing on the PXP Tranquilian Ridge project, based on the information provided by County Council in its memorandum to the Planning Commission dated May 21st, 2008, as discussed at the May 28 Planning Commission meeting hearing. Second, that we reject the claim of Brown Act violation filed by Sunset Exploration, and decline to set aside the Planning Commission's April 21st, 2008 decision regarding the PXP Tranquilian Ridge Project, 06 RVP Zero String One, as requested by Sunset Exploration Incorporated on April 30th, 2008, letter to the Planning Commission from Catalino Prey Truman, Truman Elliott LLP on behalf of Sunset Exploration, Inc. And third, that we direct the Secretary of the Planning Commission to finalize and send the attached letter to the Catalino Prey Truman responding to the claim of the Brown Act violation. Thank you.
Okay. We now have a motion on the floor. A second, is there any additional discussion at this time? Seeing only Commissioner Valencia's light lit, I'll, okay. At this juncture, then, I think we should have a roll call. Ms. Oplin?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau? Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Vote carries 401.
All righty. I think that brings to close this meeting, and we are scheduled to be here tomorrow.
In the morning.
In the morning. Thank you very much.